Good evening. Welcome to the Malibu City Council meeting, June 24th, 2019. And from the ridgeline to the coastline, from Topanga past Trancas, welcome all of you, Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mullen.
Here.
Councilmember Peak.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fair.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm looking out over the audience, I see a shiny head, Craig Hill, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
On behalf of all shiny guys, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can we get an approval of the agenda? It looks like there's a few items pulled.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of artist Robert Therian.
But I do want to pull 3B-11.
Okay, 3B-11, and I'd like to pull 3B-8 for a quick one-sentence or two.
Okay. We don't need to pull those now, we just approve the agenda.
Okay, we'll approve the agenda and then we'll come back to that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can we get a reporting on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on June 14th, 2019, with the amended agenda posted on June 20th, 2019.
Thank you, and we do have a quick ceremonial presentation to Rebecca, who lost something in the fire, and I'll meet you down at the podium. So Rebecca lost something in the fire that was dear to her, her city tile, and so we are issuing you a new city tile. And I have just a quick moment here to read about it. So, and tonight we're going to honor Rebecca Nelson Brown, a city employee since 2005, who lost her home and all her belongings in the Woolsey Fire, including her seven-year tile, originally presented in 2012. Rebecca began her career as city receptionist, she then took a position in Public Works to focus on environmental programs. She eventually transferred to the newly-created Environmental Sustainability Department, where she has become an important part of the Clean Water Act and the solid waste programs. I follow that stuff, actually. Rebecca has coordinated with multiple outside agencies and partners for citywide environmental events, including Honor the Ocean, Smart Gardening Workshop, Rain Barrel Giveaways, Oil and Paint Roundup, e-waste collection, Waste to Waves Polystyrene Collection Event, and Rebecca has also managed a construction and demolition debris recycle program. Thank you for that. Rebecca worked closely with Public Works for the installation of the bus stop trash and recycling bins, and has been involved with the annual stormwater reporting. She conducted this outreach for the Keep It Clean, Malibu One Water for All, Malibu campaigns, most recently she put together an outreach and education ban on plastic straws, polystyrene, plastic sandbags, and Rebecca is a steward of our local environment. Thank you for that. For her dedication and service, the city would like to again present her with the seven-year tile. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Yeah. There we go, and we'll get a picture with Matt. Get a third word.
Just one, one word. I just wanted to thank everyone here for all their efforts after the Woolsey Fire. I know that we've all had a really hard time, and I would like to especially thank our city manager, Riva Feldman, and my boss, Craig George, for being a great support to me here while working at the city these last seven months. And I do want to reiterate something that my husband posted on Facebook about three months ago, I am not a fire victim any longer. So, thank you very much.
And now we're moving on to a staff update on the public disaster notification system and testing, and after that, the staff update on the disaster response and recovery.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I just want to give you an update that this Wednesday, June 26th, the city will conduct a test of the disaster notification system as a part of our ongoing efforts to improve disaster preparedness, and to test an improvement of the system that greatly increases our ability to reach residents via cellphone. Our service provider, Everbridge, recently reached an agreement with cellphone companies to be able to provide government agencies, including Malibu, with cellphone numbers registered in their jurisdictions. Until now, phone companies provided only landline numbers to the city, and the only cellphone numbers we had access to were from people who registered independently on the system. So now, we've been able to increase the number of cellphones from about 3,600 to almost 12,000. That's crucial, because currently, only about half of American households still have landlines. All information will be kept strictly confidential and will not be shared with third parties. The Disaster Mass Notification System, Everbridge, is only used in case of major disasters or evacuations to send emergency information by landline phone call, cellphone phone call, text message, and email. This is only one tool in our communications toolbox, and in the event of another disaster, we will make use of every tool we have, and we are also looking at increasing those tools however we can. And it is separate from the city's website Alert Center, which is regularly used to send out traffic, weather, utility, and minor emergency alerts by text message and email to subscribers. When activated, the system will send a voice or text message or notification on the Everbridge app. It will cycle through every registered device until the resident clicks a message received confirmation. The new numbers will be tested in the morning, and the existing numbers will be tested in the afternoon, so some people may receive two messages. Afterward, the city will analyze the results and make further improvements. If any residents do not receive a text message on June 26th, we urge them to call City Hall at 310-456-2489, and we will make sure that they do get entered into the system.
Yes, yes, Skylar has a question.
Lisa, if somebody, when you're talking about someone's cellphone being commented on, or I mean, being contacted, if that person has a phone that's registered in the city but they're not in Malibu, can you clarify how that's going to work? Like, let's say they work in the city or something like that, and they don't get the message on their phone, will they still receive it that day or not?
Yes, they will. So, for example, city employees are registered in the system, and if something happens when we're at home, not in the city, we do receive those alerts, just as if we were in, lived in Malibu. Now, if somebody has a cellphone that lives in Malibu, but say it's registered at their office, it would not be automatically entered into the system, and we would remind everybody to go ahead and opt-in and make sure that that phone is registered.
Yeah, I think that that's a really important thing for residents to know, is that a lot of people don't have their cellphone bill registered to their home, maybe it goes to a business or an office in town, and please make it a point to let the city know and get your information in there, because that's the best way for us to contact you in the event of a disaster.
Mayor, can I just add one comment?
Certainly.
We also have, if there is actually a disaster, another option to use the WIA system, which is the Wireless Emergency Alert System. We're all familiar with it through Amber Alerts, and recently, the city acquired the ability to issue its own WIA notifications. Prior and during the Woolsey Fire, we only had the option of having the county issue that for us, and the difference between our own reverse 911 system that Lisa was explaining we'll be testing on Wednesday, is that the WIA system works off of cell towers. So, for example, if it's the Fourth of July, and there's unfortunately a disaster, and we need to communicate with everybody who is here in Malibu, we can issue a WIA alert which pings off of the local tower, so anybody within range of those towers will also receive a notification. So, as Lisa mentioned, we are adding tools to our toolbox, and if there is another disaster, we plan on using all of them to communicate, and of course, hoping that we have power so that we have cell tower communications.
Thank you for that clarification, and thank you, Lisa. And now we're off to the disaster response and recovery updates.
Good evening, Mayor Wagner, City Council. I'd like to first start off with tonight, just to let you know, it was too late to get on to our presentation today. Oh, actually, we did, okay. Bonnie has just corrected me. So, today, we issued our seventh rebuild permit, and that was later this afternoon, so I didn't know if we could get that on there in time, but thanks to all the IT team and everybody else, we did get it. So, this is the last permit we issued just this afternoon for a fire rebuild, so that brings us up to seven permits we've now issued, and we're on our way. The other thing I'd like to announce to you, as I drove in this morning, I saw the site, it's the old Malibu and Racket Club, and that is the last site in Malibu that is being cleared, and the Cal Recycle, Cal OES program, the debris part of it will be completed, hopefully in the next day or two, but that's the last site in Malibu for that program. There's still some soil testing and some erosion control to be done, but the debris for that program, well over 500 properties, is gone, and that's great. So now, we're concentrating on the opt-out program and getting that completed, and that's going very well as well, but we'll keep reporting on that part of it. In regards to the Malibu rebuilds, as we had submitted before, every week, this is going up, basically on the single-family, I think is the most important part of it. We've issued the seven permits, as you see updated there, we have 23 houses in plan check, and a number of feasibility reports for the foundations also in plan check. We've kind of canvassed some people out there, and I think, based on the outcome of tonight's meeting in regards to fees and stuff, I think a lot of people are just kind of waiting so that they can submit their program or their project in knowing what the status of the fees are, so we're anticipating in the next couple of weeks an uptick in those submittals based on that. We'll see, we can report to you on that. So again, we've had six, we're up to seven single-family rebuilds, and we've issued 31 repair permits, again, well on our way to starting and commencing actual rebuilding and not in the other part of it. And that's it for tonight, we can give you our answer, any questions you may have in regards to the programs.
Thank you, Craig. All right, and we have, we're now onto 2A. Thank you, Craig, thank you, Bonnie. Public speakers and public comments, looks like we have a pretty good-sized handful.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first up is Ken Luskin, and Ken Luskin appears has seven minutes. Speaker Marney, are you here to give your minute? There you go. And Ken Luskin, there you are, and then...
I thought it was eight minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just checking the names, it's part of the protocol. And Babette, there you are, okay, and then finally, John Mazza, there you are, okay. Seven minutes, thank you, Ken.
First off, it's very important for you to understand that recently, a person whose name I cannot divulge delivered evidence and testimony to the FBI regarding criminality in the Malibu city government. Additionally, I have my own personal hard evidence of criminality in Malibu city government that I will soon also deliver to the FBI. Over two months ago, I spoke at a council meeting about abolishing the city manager form of government. Here's a brief summary of what I said. The people of Malibu never voted to give all the operational control over our city to an unelected person. The very first city council in 1990 did that when they had only four employees. That may have made some sense back then, it does not make sense today for a city of 100 employees. Every city in the USA that can afford democracy chooses it over this twisted, corrupt form of government. This city council can at any time take back the operational control of our city by voting to abolish the city manager form of government. Mayor Jefferson Wagner, Mikey Pearson, and Skylar Peak responded to this idea during their time to talk. Their responses to this idea so alarmed the city manager that she committed the crime of unauthorized access into your individual email accounts. I sent you the hard evidence of this two months ago, proving that this was a violation of two federal criminal statutes. The evidence showed that my emails were being blocked, but only to the city council members, while at the exact same time, my email to the city clerk and other addresses at the malabuacity.org domain were going through just fine. The only way this could happen is if someone at the highest level of Malibu city government, who also had full access to the Malibu city computer system, went into the individual email accounts of each council member and then blocked my email address. The only person with such a high level of computer system access and the motivation to commit or order someone else to commit such an outrageously illegal act is the city manager, Riva Feldman. The digital fingerprints of this crime are clear-cut. Attempts to destroy the digital evidence in the Malibu city computer system will also be clear-cut. The lies that were told to the city clerk to transmit back to me are also clear-cut. If you do not understand the severity of the crime of unauthorized email access, you should consider that the initial evidence that supported the appointment of ex-FBI head Robert Mueller as special prosecutor was based on the same crime of unauthorized email access into Hillary Clinton's email system. City attorney Kristi Hogan and some of you have been trying to deny that the crime I reported to you over two months ago actually occurred. What you are doing is known as a cover-up. Cover-ups are considered to be even more reprehensible than the underlying crime. By participating in a cover-up, you are committing a new crime. Many people went to prison for trying to cover up the Nixon administration's Watergate crime. Many people are now going to prison for lying to the FBI about Hillary Gate. Here is more evidence of another cover-up that is going on in Malibu city government regarding the so-called investigation review of the Woolsey Fire. Mikey Pearson, in a moment of honesty, told me that the so-called investigation was discussed in a closed session of the council as a way to, quote, "clear Riva." Clear Riva are the exact words used by Mikey. Jefferson Wagner confirmed to me that in a closed session of the city council, this was discussed. So Mikey was telling me privately that this so-called investigation/review was a sham, a whitewash, a fraud, from the very beginning, but it was not his idea. Mikey was informing me that he simply followed the direction of the majority of the city council. Jefferson Wagner confirmed this to me, because he too does not want to be tainted by the lies that the other council members want to tell the people of Malibu to clear the corrupt, lying city manager. I will testify under oath that this is precisely what Mikey and Jay said to me. About 20% of the population of Malibu were rendered homeless by the Woolsey Fire. Deliberately lying to so many people and their neighbors after such a tragedy is reprehensible and potentially criminal. This is a really sad situation. It's pathetic that I have to come up here and challenge you people to uphold the oath of office you took, to faithfully and honestly represent the people of Malibu in their city government. When people lie, it destroys trust. Lying destroys the fabric of our civil society, which is based upon trust. I know from talking with many citizens in Malibu that they are scared of retribution from their city government if they speak out. Being scared of your own government is not what should happen in a well-functioning democracy. Being scared of your own government is what happens in places run by tyrants. A tyrant is a person exercising power or control in a cruel and oppressive way. This city council is to blame for this situation, because not only are you doing nothing to rectify it, you are lying to perpetuate it. It's significantly better for you to report criminal activity to the FBI before they approach you, especially in this situation, because if you report a crime involving corruption to the FBI, you will gain whistleblower status and immunity from prosecution. The FBI encourages people to come in and report crimes because they want to prosecute the ringleaders, not those lower down, but if you wait for them to come after you, then you're in a position of legal jeopardy. In this situation, it's the city manager, Riva Feldman, who is the ringleader, architect, and the director of the corruption and criminality that has been taking place in Malibu city government for a number of years. Rick, you served in our country's armed forces, and now is a fireman. Do you want your legacy to be that you were caught up in a federal investigation for covering up crimes in Malibu city government? Karen, you are relatively new to Malibu city government. What is the upside to you for putting yourself in such legal jeopardy? Skylar, you're an excellent waterman from an old Malibu family. I don't see any real upside from protecting this city manager, while the downside to your reputation and family from a federal investigation and indictment is immense. My advice to all of you, it's time for you to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, because only the truth will set you free. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Mark Bitten, Dr. Bitten. It's with an A-N, not E-N, Bittan, sorry.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I want to address the parking problem at 22775 Pacific Coast Highway, and Trevor, I see you're here, I was at two planning commissions, and is there a plan? Because that's how I left it last week, when I was leaving the planning commission, I said, is there a plan? Is there?
I can't comment during your public comment, but it has been referred to.
I was told that there was a plan. There was a plan to apparently have seven-foot, eight-inch parking spaces, seven-foot parking spaces. I mean, there's not one that's nine feet, and the ones that are up against the law, up against the wall. So, you all got packets there, there were three DVDs in the packet. One is all 16 spaces, there's not one that's even eight feet, and there's probably about three or four that would be six feet. Park your Suburban in a six-foot parking space. These aren't parking spaces, these are storage areas. So, what's coming up is, you see, that's a letter from the Hakim's lawyer, and they're saying, the city has a plan, the city has requirements, and they're following it. I don't know who came up with seven-foot parking place plans unless somebody's doing the Hakim's a favor. It has nothing to do with high tide, there should be 11 parking spaces there, not 16, and even with that, they won't all be legal. Rather than the 20%, that'll be eight feet wide, they'll be a little bit over it, there'll be three that'll be eight feet wide. Therefore, that will end my lease, which is what my goal is, because it's totally destroyed my veterinary practice. I had an extremely successful veterinary practice in West LA for two years, for 22 years, and they tore the building down in the name of progress. I live here since 97, and I said, well, at 60 years old, I don't want to open up another office in West LA. You know, you don't get down on your hands and knees and start measuring parking spaces. You know, I was there at 7:30 in the morning, checking it out, I'm more interested what's going on inside the office, and it just doesn't work. So, one of the videos that you have, one of the DVDs that you have, is one of my clients trying to pull into the space, I have three spaces there, and when he gets into the space, he can't open up his door, and he's not taking his 110-pound German Shepherd out of the car if he can't open up the door. Those are not parking spaces. So, it just doesn't work. The second video, I could have had 20 or 30 videos of all the Mad Max stuff that goes on in that parking lot, but the one is 56 letters that clients sent to me in three days, because it was before the planning commission, and I said, you know, let me know what you think about the parking here. Well, those 56 letters talk about how it is unworkable, why they're not coming back to my office, and it's nothing about high tide, the people who work there, they're wonderful, I'm friends with all of them, but their customers are, no expletives allowed. I mean, when I'm reading the letters, it's not like that just my receptionist is chasing the high-tide people out of my spaces, my clients are basically having fights with them, because they see them park in my space, they're running up, because they can't park. One of the videos that you guys got at the planning commission was over the line, and I just had photograph after photograph of, people don't even attempt to park in the parking spaces, because they can't. So, it doesn't work. I'm also working on another, it's not for tonight, but I'm just letting you know with the character of the Hakims. You all know the famous archway over my parking lot. Apparently, Denny Moore put that archway up without a permit. I got every single permit from 1966 until the present, and there is no permit for the archway or their third floor there. In my lease, I'm supposed to have the signage that's on that archway. That's fraud. So, I'm dealing with that with my attorney, getting out of the lease that way, the parking doesn't work, you'll see it on the videos, you'll read the letters from my clients, and then you'll know, this is just a disaster. So, from the previous person, you want to do the right thing, but let me tell you now, I know I'm over, on Friday, I am repainting the parking spaces. I am.
Thank you, Doctor. We've got all the CDs here, thank you. Don Richstone, and Don is followed by Andy Lyon, who's followed by Ted Silverberg.
The reason I'm here is the proposed zoning ordinance change, which is de facto the downzoning of every residential property in Malibu. And it's pure hubris to think that, and this affects every property owner in Malibu, to think that most Malibuites are aware that you're, in fact, downzoning their properties. I'm pretty much with it, but if it wasn't for Don Schmidt's letter, I wouldn't be aware that my property was being downzoned. And I think that you're moving way too fast. This is probably the biggest change in Malibu in the last 25 years, and most of the public doesn't know about it. I go to the market, and I ask people, are you aware that they're reducing the size of your house? And nobody really knows about it. So, I suggest that you do two things. One is, don't have the meeting right before the Fourth of July, when most of Malibu or a lot of Malibu is on vacation. That's kind of like doing it midnight in the dark. Educate Malibu, let them know what you're contemplating doing, so you don't have an uprising where suddenly people realize, well, I thought I could build a 7,000-square-foot house, and now it's only 4,000. People don't know this. You think they know it, because you guys are wonks. You know, you go to the meetings, you know what the planning commission is doing, but most of Malibu is completely unaware, and they're going to be hit on the side of the head with a two-by-four when they wake up to see what you've done. So I say, go slow, and I suggest you also do a survey to find out if most Malibuites think this is a good idea or not, after you educate them. Because my guess is, is very few people are going to like this, especially when they realize that you're going to have the averaging, which is essentially going to create a caste system in Malibu. You're going to have the upper castes, like in Malibu Colony, where people have the wherewithal to build out to the max, and White Sands Place, where they build out to the max, and the lower castes, like on Doom Drive and Wandermere, where they can build smaller houses. You're creating a caste system, and that's not American. It's not, it's not treating people equally. And so, I suggest you have a survey, you slow this down, let the public know what you're contemplating doing, and then proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Don is followed by Andy Lyon, and Andy Lyon is followed by Ted Silverberg, who is followed by Jewel Johnson.
Good evening, sir.
Okay, I hate coming here. The last time I came here, I was talking about the sale of the Chili Cook-Off lot to the fire department, and how I just wanted it on the record that all of your commissioners, all 15 of...
all 15 of your commissioners voted against that sale, and all 16 members of the public that spoke all said they didn't want it to go forward. And when I got home, I watched, and Karen, you responded to me saying, I just want to make it clear that the city didn't go to the county, the county went to the city, and I just want that to be straight. And I said nothing about that. But in a typical, like Laura Rosenthal-esque move, you twisted what I said and tried to make it like I was insinuating something else, that I was. And all I was saying was that we shouldn't be looking into selling that. But you seem to know, even though that first meeting was in September of 2018, you weren't even on city council, so you're just sort of telling what somebody told you to say, that the county came to the city. Were you involved in the sale before you were on council? I don't think so. But if some, I mean, since you brought it up, because then Matt Meyerhoff also commented the same thing. I didn't say anything about, it didn't matter who approached who. I was just saying, we don't want to sell it. It's our property, it's not Riva's, and three of you to sell. That's it. Didn't matter who. But you made a point of bringing that up, and so I have to come back and like, now I've got to come here again and respond to you, because it's two weeks later, and I'm pissed that, like, I have to do that. But since that meeting, I look back in September of 2018, and three speakers spoke. Suzanne Gildman, Mary Ann Riggins, and Norm Haney. All three of them agreed that it was a great property to have. Suzanne Gildman said, we shouldn't be paying a consultant to figure out what we should be doing with those properties. Mary Ann Riggins said, we needed a skate park. Norm Haney came up with the thing, saying skateboards are maybe part of, like, the transportation that was part of the thing. Anyways, so why is it still, tonight on the budget, it's still in there. It's still in the budget, even though it's pushed. And there still is something in the budget about the consultant for $250,000 that's still in there, that's getting pushed. So you're going to hold that property hostage for a year and not do any planning on what we're going to get. We're going to be no closer to a skate park, we're going to be no closer to anything. We're definitely closer to a sale, because you went and got an appraisal, a bogus $4-million appraisal on the property. And my kid, 20 months old, he's not going to get a skate park. But I want to know, really, you should say, what part of the county fire department came to the city? Was it you, Rick? Because you're technically part of the county fire department. Who was the person that talked to Riva? Who?
Thank you, Andy. Andy is followed by Ted Silverberg, and Ted, you are followed by Jewel Johnson, who has extra minutes.
Good evening, city council. We obviously have our share of challenges, and I commend you all for the efforts that you guys put into it. I want to thank you all for your service, just to start. Malibu's an amazing community. I've known all of you for at least the 40 years that I've been here. Everybody on the city council, except for Riva, I apologize, I don't. I also want to thank all the supporters. When I sent you guys the emails, every one of you got back to me, and a whole lot of supporters got back to me, too. So the reason I'm here is, as you know on the council, I've done numerous community events that are termed Surf Swaps, and the Stoke Fest, and all the things that we've done. And I really want to present something positive for my two minutes and 18 seconds that are left. And what I want Malibu to do is support me in putting together a repurposing and recycling meat for surfing and beach products, beach items, on an ongoing basis. Again, sponsored by the city. With that, it would allow people to donate, sell, trade all their surfing and beach items. So again, it wouldn't be going to landfills, it wouldn't be doing negative things, it would be doing positive things. People could trade them, and what's most positive about it is, the money that we raise through, however we're going to raise it off a donation-type thing, is all going to go to the Malibu Sharks Surf Team. For those of you that don't know what the Malibu Sharks Surf Team is, it's an independent PE, because Malibu's a high school, does not have a surf team, even though we're one of the most famous surf cities in the world. And so this money could go back to them to support it. A lot of people believe that Malibu's an overly affluent city. I believe that we also have a lot of working-class people, and the money that we could raise could really be a huge help, like the Boys and Girls Club is, for kids that really need this, and their ability to be able to get into colleges. We also want to change the Malibu Surf Team, so that we have colleges coming to look at our kids, and maybe some can get scholarships off of what we're doing. We want to do a lot of positive things. But the core of everything that we're trying to do would be the city to donate the time and some sort of possible effort in helping us just market this, and it would be a consistent, ongoing, either biannual or quarterly event. And anybody and everybody could be involved, whether it's through paying for donations or, you know, however, they give a percentage of the money back. We have ways of doing it. I've spearheaded and founded, as I've shown you guys, dozens of these in the last few years, and it would be really easy for me to formulate it. Again, all I really need is the city to be able to give me an area, a place to do it, whether it's the parking lot on weekends, or somewhere that's not being used, that wouldn't take away from anything else. So that's it. I'm just looking for city support and a venue to be able to host a Malibu Surf Swap that would give back to the Malibu Sharks Surf Team, which again is a nonprofit, and it's now being registered as 501(c)(3), and it would make Malibu look amazing as a city.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you. Jewel, Jewel, you're up, you have extra minutes. And after you is Bert Ross. Bert Ross has extra minutes, and then Carolyn Carradine. Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. My name is Ranger Jewel Johnson with the MRCA. I just wanted to come up here to kind of give you an overview of what the Rangers are doing within the city of Malibu. This will hopefully go quickly. So our coastal patrol area is actually from Ventura Canyon Line to the Pacific Palisades. We have a few parks that are inside Malibu. We have our coastal access points, you know, it's summertime, so they're all going to be busy. Let's use the beaches as our busiest park, our beach, and so we got issues of dogs on the beach, off-leash, alcohol, smoking, fishing, litter. After hours activity, we received a call, our bonfire, so we're kind of changing our schedule so we can kind of cover the nighttime activity. We have that flexibility. Kind of clean that up. Escondido Canyon Park, as you know, is probably our busiest park, mainly because people like to climb the waterfall, which is actually private property, which we constantly tell them that, stay off the, and the, not the, the fire department is constantly rescuing people. We had problems with litter, because someone thought it was a good idea to put a trashcan halfway up the trail and then above the waterfall, so we cleaned that out. I also like to give alternative waterfall hikes to the, to the public, like, give Escondido Canyon Park a break already. Corral Canyon Park and Cameron Nature Preserve, after the fire, since it's part of the coastal slope, Cameron Preserve is starting to get more activity. They're usually accessing it from Corral Canyon, the Sarawan, it's still kind of a neighborhood park. Dog off-leash, people leaving their poop bags on the left, left on the trail. And we got a motorcyclist that likes to go up there, and we're still trying to capture him and give him a lecture, citation. In April and May, we had very few Ranger Service calls, the coastline graffiti, you know, Carden Beach, people get locked on the beach, they think, we tell them, walk down to the LA County Access Norrbu, and you can get out. Hikers were going up the trail, mostly during the fire, after the fire, we closed Escondido and Charmley after the fire, and people kept going through there. These are kind of a breakdown of our citations. Mostly closed area, fee area, blocking the fire hydrant. Administered citations, again, this is just during May, this is basically after the fire, where we had Escondido Canyon and Charmley closed, and people kept going in there, and they didn't understand what the word "area closed" due to hazardous conditions. They're like, what? I thought it was for cars only. So we got Malibu Bluffs, we just got that back. As you know, 2014 was transferred for a year to the management of the city of Malibu. We got it back on the 29th, was transferred back. We did get the email from the city of Malibu, saying that there's a homeless encampment in there. This was the attached photo of the camp. On the 17th, I went out there, and I hand-delivered a written notification to the occupant. I posted the encampment. The occupant was notified to remove his personal belongings on or before Wednesday, June 19th. Violations are basically, you know, dumping park hours, entry to parkland. On the 19th, the subject voluntarily removed his personal belongings, and then our crew went in there, and they removed the following. And this was right off Malibu Road, and it was actually removed. We're still in dealing with the occupant. He's been a longtime resident, so we're going to be dealing with him a lot. We are able to make contact with the other two occupants of two other camps that are in there, in the ravine. They are presently moving their belongings out. I'm meeting, I met with the occupant yesterday, and we walked pretty much the entire bluff, made contact with him, gave him written notification. I will be meeting him back on Wednesday, where he will be removing his belongings and any trash that he has. I told him to go ahead and put him in the back of my truck, and we'll be dumping that for him. These are the occupants' left belongings. That was a barbecue, by the way. Signs have been posted. This is my contact information. If anyone has any issues with the parkland that we manage, our number is on all of our signs. Just so you know, you will get a call back, even if it's 1 o'clock in the morning, if we need more information, you will get a call back within five minutes, so don't be shocked, so.
Well, thank you, Ranger Johnson. Are you going to have yourself or a member here to discuss if the council had some questions? Can you hang out for a few more minutes?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, after Ranger Johnson is Bert Ross. Bert, you have extra minutes. Bert is followed by Carolyn and Christopher Carradine.
Mayor Wagner, and members of the city council. My name is Bert Ross, and I appear before you this evening to thank all of you. Our city manager, Riva Feldman, and our city employees, who have worked tirelessly to help the thousands of us who have been uprooted from our homes. Many of us are too preoccupied and distracted to come to these council meetings to thank you personally, but don't think we do not appreciate your efforts on our behalf. I was shocked and horrified to hear a recording on television of a recent council meeting in which a man, filled with anger, charged this government with corruption and a cover-up. He actually went so far as to state that he possessed evidence of criminal activity, and he was here again today making the identical charges. He handed out a flyer, and I quote, and it's painful for me to read this, Riva. "Riva Feldman is totally lacking in honesty, empathy, and courage. Riva Feldman is corrupt and has committed numerous crimes." At the end of this meeting, you can tell me where to put the trash or recycling. I take the charges of public corruption most seriously. I literally risked my life to fight and beat a corrupt political machine. As mayor of Fort Lee, New Jersey, I worked with the county prosecutor to end the tenure of our police chief, who literally met with members of the underworld in his office. And when I was offered a half-million-dollar bribe by the mafia to rezone property, I immediately reported it to the United States Attorney's Office and offered to wear a wire, which I did on three separate occasions under the supervision of the FBI. My life was threatened, I went into hiding, and I was even offered the Witness Protection Program. As much as I hate political corruption, I also detest when a person recklessly libels and slanders public officials. When baseless rumors are spread on the internet, such as the one saying our city manager went on vacation to Hawaii just one week after the fire, an unmitigated lie, when these vicious falsehoods are stated as facts, it has a corrosive impact on our community. This kind of behavior destroys trust in our public officials, poisons community discourse, and could well deter honest people from seeking public office. It is, of course, our right to criticize policies and the execution of those policies, which we do not like. It is a far different thing to spread false and unsubstantiated accusations. I remember well when a political rad, holding itself out as a newspaper, charged me with taking money at the very same time I was wearing a wire to help apprehend seven people who, based on my undercover work, ended up in jail. I still feel the frustration of not having been able to respond immediately to those blatant lies. And that must be the sense of frustration, that you people who serve the public have to sit here and take it. If any person has convincing evidence of criminal activity, then it is his or her obligation to do what I did and to contact the county prosecutor or the United States Attorney's Office. If that person is unwilling to do so, then at least have the common decency to cease and desist from spreading hatred. And I can assure you, had this individual gone to the FBI with anything resembling solid evidence, the last thing they'd want him to do is to come to this office and rant and rave. Those of us who lost our homes or were temporarily displaced are going through a very difficult and emotional healing process.
I'm sorry.
We need, one second. We need the continued support of our city, not rumor mongering or viciousness. Thank you again for what you are all doing on our behalf.
Okay, Bert is followed by Christopher Carradine, and we have Carolyn Carradine. Yep, you're both here. Okay, thank you.
We're all here, again. Good evening. Well, given the tone of this evening, I think I'll start with the Phoenicians. I want to talk about two things very quickly, neither of which are on the agenda yet, but they will be shortly. First is primary view determinations, and we saw a process last week with the planning commission, where two different versions of a way to prevent primary view determinations being attempted over burnouts by people whose houses did not burn, either make it simply for Woolsey Fire burnouts, or to try and craft some kind of a one-size-fits-all zoning piece that would be, I believe, is going to take months to achieve, whereas, really, the critical issue right now that I think you guys are going to have to look at is whether or not you want to try and craft one-size-fits-all language for something, or you simply want to just have a four-year moratorium on primary view determinations over burned-down properties. That would be what those of us who have lost properties to the fire will need immediately, because it's basically an emergency situation, since the law is still on the books, and a clever attorney could enforce it. Not that there are that many clever attorneys in attendance most of the time. Thank you. Trevor, accepted. The other thing I want to talk about is, I tend to agree with the outrage over the total development square footage downzoning. Primarily, I have a problem with it. I'm an architect, but I really have a problem with trying to summon up the difference between the emotional characteristic of calling everything that's larger than your house mansionization, which I think is basically just hate language, because those of us who've worked hard all of our lives and happen to have a bigger house than you, don't happen to live in a mansion. Toad Hall is a mansion. And if you think about mansionization as overdevelopment, go look in the Hollywood Hills, that's where you'll see mansionization. Not here in Malibu. I've lived here for 22 years, and I haven't seen a flood of gigantic houses. I've seen people developing large properties that they've paid a fortune for with site-appropriate projects. Now, what I would actually suggest that all of you do, and do it several times, is Lester Tobias, and I don't know if he's here tonight, but I'm going to do a shout-out for Lester. Lester has wrote, written a very thoughtful opposition to this proposed zoning text amendment, where he actually dealt in facts and not just blank emotion. And I think that the outside consultant, the former director of planning, got it totally wrong. And I think that, before you guys consider anything, you ought to look at the numbers first and foremost. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Carolyn, you're up. Carolyn's followed by Paul Grisanti, Kathy Ellis, and then Denise.
Good evening. I have some questions for all of you. First of all, I want to reiterate what Chris said, as far as... First of all, I want to reiterate what Chris said as far as the view determination. We need to have that done immediately for the Woolsey Fire victims, just for them and for four years. That's really important, not worrying about future events or any of the problems they were bringing up at the Planning Commission. Okay, we are now entering fire season, as I'm sure you're all very well aware. The hills are turning brown. We had tremendous rain and a lot of growth. It has all the earmarks of being a very dangerous fire season. And the questions I have for all of you are, have you done an evacuation plan for us? An effective evacuation plan? That's one. Have you gotten emergency permits to pump water from the ocean? Have you done anything about updating the fire hydrants? Are you going to do any kind of training for people in their homes to prevent, like Mikey did with his house? Because people aren't going to leave. This time, they're not going to leave. They're not going to evacuate, and you're going to have loss of life. So you need to train the people how to protect their homes, because they're all going to stay, because we got no help last time. That's pretty much it. I really want to know what's been done to help the people whose houses survived. We lost ours. I don't want this to happen to anyone else. It's terrible. And I also want to, I know that Riva has been working on waiving the permit fee, and I don't know whether that's done or not, but I want to thank you very, very much. We really appreciate any help that you can give to those of us who lost everything. So thank you, Riva.
Thank you, Carolyn. And Paul Gressanti, you're up, and Kathy Ellis, and then Denise, and then Brian Merrick, and then Lance Simmons.
Mayor and city council, I can't begin to tell you how pleased I was on Friday to be able to finally download the proposed ordinance that we'll be discussing at the Planning Commission meeting next week. And I was very appreciative of the work that the staff did to not only clearly depict with a nice chart what the impact is for each house, but to also to propose some other alternatives. One of the alternatives they proposed was that we just forget about the 25% reduction that Rick added almost as an afterthought. The other thing that they proposed was to only make it apply to the properties that over an acre, which would further flatten this curve, and I'm opposed to that. The other thing I would like to say is that why isn't there a third option? The third option would be no project. The Planning Commission should come back with no project. They love to have no project. This is the one they could do it on. There should be no ordinance. Moving forward from that, there's been some wonderful news about Malibu. I was delighted to see in The Hollywood Reporter, the headline, "A Chance to Start Over: How Malibu Has Embraced Optimism After the Devastating Fire." I read the whole thing, and I, looking for where that quote came from, and they were quoting C.C. Woods, who I believe several of you know. And what she said is, "The Woolsey Fire is the best and worst thing to happen to Malibu. It gives us a chance to start over." I got to tell you, if any of you people are taking political advice from her, don't let her write your speeches. Nobody I know thinks that there was any part of the Woolsey Fire that was the best it could possibly be. This is just, it's disgusting, okay? And as to next week at the Planning Commission, I sent out a thing to many residents of Malibu that told people to bring their torches and pitchforks to the meeting, and I got a message asking me to, did I think it was a good idea? Did I think that people might not take me literally? Well, when I looked at this thing and I saw that it's scheduled to be the last thing on the agenda, maybe I'll send out one this Thursday that says, "Leave your torches and pitchforks in the car, but do bring your footy pajamas and a nice pillow, because you're going to be there for a long damn time." So do come next week. It's going to be tons of fun, and I think you should see it in person. Take care.
Thank you, Paul. Paul's followed by Kathy. Kathy is followed by Denise, who's followed by Brian.
Hi. I came to speak against the ordinance, the TDSF ordinance. I believe that when Malibu became a city in 19, was it 1991? That our founding, founders of our city downsized the requirements that LA County had on our area. They made it smaller at that time, and I believe that they took a lot of care and planning. I believe that they love the city of Malibu, and that they did everything they could to make the homes here sized fairly, based on the size of the lots. In LA, you see these lots where there is no yard whatsoever. The entire lot is filled with a big house. We don't have that here. We do not have that here. We have setbacks. We have careful, careful planning, where the house does not take up the entire lot, where people have yards to play in, they have room for a pool, et cetera, et cetera. Are they large houses? Yes, they're large houses. But you know what? They're large lots. If you put a large house on a tiny lot, that is pretty disgusting, and that's not what Malibu is about. And again, I just don't think that by making homes smaller, we're going to turn back the clock to find old Malibu. Old Malibu unfortunately doesn't exist that much anymore. But I just don't think it's fair to run a situation like this through, where people do not know about it, like what Don Richstone says, because the public out there, they don't know this is coming. And that is not, to me, that's just not fair. At least the public should be educated and know that this is coming. If most of them want it, hallelujah, that's democracy. But to just shove it through while nobody is looking after a devastating fire, I just don't think it's the right way to do things. So I would just urge you to allow people to know what you're doing. And again, like Paul was saying, you put it at the end of the agenda. You know, how many people are going to come here at 11:00? Is this fair for the homeowners? They own the homes. You should allow them to have a say with what's going to happen with their own properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise, and Denise, you're followed by Brian Merrick, Lance Simmons, Ryan Embry.
Hi to everybody. First of all, I know a lot of you, some of you for a very long time, some of you for a shorter time. I'm here representing Big Heart Ranch and to ask for reconsideration on the allocation of what I understand there is a little bit of grant money left over. I'm here to talk about the importance of Big Heart Ranch in this community that I've lived in my whole life, and the necessity for the mental health and well-being of our children. Karen, your kid, my kid, went to school together. You, I've known since you were much younger than me. My dad, as I mentioned before, taught here, began teaching here, and Malibu High just had opened up, the junior high school. I've been involved with children for 40 years here in this community. The epidemic of stress-related, post-traumatic stress-related, emotionally-related health issues, mental health issues with children in this community has always been difficult. It doesn't matter whether you're the wealthy or you're the middle class, like my family was. With the fire and the people losing their home and children not having beds to go to, Big Heart Ranch has provided a partnership to both the public schools, therapists in our community, doctors in our community, individuals who call us on a repeated basis to help their children. We have provided horse, animal, equine therapy to over 300 children since March that have, you know, come out of the Malibu Fire. We have, we work hand-in-hand with the Boys and Girls Club. I understand that they were, that they are partners with the public schools officially for mental health and wellness of kids, but I will let you know that we are partners with them. We have 25 children coming tomorrow. The type of therapy that we offer oftentimes offers a child the ability to speak when they're too afraid to talk to a doctor or psychiatrist. Having the ability to work with animals sometimes provides a safety net for those children. I am begging you to reconsider some allocation of funds to us and help us as this city. Let us be partners with you. The kids need it, and we need your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Merrick's followed by Lance Simmons, followed by Ryan Embry.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak today and the opportunity to speak to you. I just want to add that on the view thing, as someone that was part of the view and wrote it all, there is a clause in there regarding not obtaining a view through destruction, whether it's wildfire or not. But whether they enforce it or not, I don't know, but it was in there and it was thought of. So I'm here to talk about the, because on, I won't be around on July 1st, like many people in Malibu. I'm going to get the heck out of here for the 4th of July, because it's too crazy here for me these days. So I'm here because I feel strongly that the total allowance and the reduction in square footage is a bad thing. I feel that it would negatively affect older, smaller ranch homes, people who live in ranch homes, where there are many of us still that do so. I live in one. I don't have a ficus hedge. I don't have a wall. My house is open. But to take away the future value or potential value of a property is, if you go by today's standards of approximately a median average of $1,000 per square foot, you're downsizing me from $7,000 down to $4,000. That becomes almost a $2.6 million loss of potential future value, which is, which is how most investments are looked at anyhow, whether it's a stock market event where it's present-day value versus future value. I also think that, you know, having the meeting on July 1st is a mistake. There won't be a lot of participation. I don't think a lot of people know what's going on. And then I think that also including sheds, stables, gazebos, and those types of things under the allowable square footage is going to negatively impact the ruralness that the people that are behind this want in Malibu, because you won't have horse corrals, you won't have other things like that on a property if it means you're losing a bedroom or a bathroom because of it. Finally, I just want to say that it's very convenient for people to try and say, oh, well, it's just the real estate professionals, or it's the developers that are behind it. And that's not, that's behind the opposition, and that's not true. I'm not affiliated with anybody here. No one sent out, I didn't send out any letters, but I do feel, as a resident, a longtime resident and a family that has been in Malibu since the '40s in a small ranch home, that, you know, I'm being penalized by this, and I don't think it's fair. I think that also this false narrative that, you know, we are somehow, realtors are somehow in on this, it's not true. We just happen to be the biggest employment sector in Malibu, where the people, and the majority of us have lived here for a long time, we were organized, and that's why you hear from us. It's not because we're behind any kind of development thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Lance, you're up, and then Ryan, you're after Lance.
Hello, city council, mayor. I almost feel guilty, because I came here with some positive things to say. I want to wear two hats tonight. First of all, I'm a Public Works Commissioner, and in the capital improvement project that you're going to be looking at later today, we spent a great deal of time and reached the consensus on including in a portion of the Civic Center bike lanes. A dedicated bike lane going up the hill and a shared bike lane coming down the hill. And many of you know that I am an avid cyclist, and to the extent to which we can use this as hopefully a springboard to continue to do more bike lanes in the city, I think is a wise thing from a public safety standpoint. It's always best to separate the cars from the bikes as much as you can. So, anyway, so I want to applaud that development. And then the second hat, I'm on the Executive Committee of Operation Recovery, and we put together a list, 450 heroes of the Woolsey Fire. I have nice little, nice little certificates of appreciation and a dolphin pin and a free car wash and stuff like that. Anyway, 100 people have not picked it up. So to the extent that you can use your megaphone to encourage people who are on this list, and they can just go to the Malibu Times and see if, you know, call them up, see if they're on the list, and, you know, maybe make them feel good. Maybe it won't matter. So I got a minute left, and now I guess it's time to get serious. I spent 40 years, my whole professional life, was in politics, public policy, and government. And one of the biggest things that I've seen to the detriment of society in general over those 40 years is a real degradation and a loss of civility. And I think that that is dangerous for all of us. And the extent to which we can restore civility in our public discourse, it will also restore confidence in the institutions and the leaders which make decisions on our behalf. So I just want to, I've written two books about this. I've written over 750 published articles. Let's be civil. And if there's criminal activity, and if there's corruption, as has been alleged, I agree with my friend Mayor Ross. There's an appropriate venue for that, and that appropriate venue is the court of law with evidence.
Thank you, Lance. Ryan, you're up. Ryan is our final speaker.
I wanted to thank the city for putting the big budget before you tonight. I'll speak on that later. The good news is that you've made great strides in the eight-year quest that Lou Lamont had to finally regulate locally in some fashion the concentration of local rehab facilities, whether they're group homes or drug treatment places and so forth. And that had largely taken top priority of the city's legislative agenda for those eight years. And the other big-ticket item that has plagued this city for the last 20-something years is the city being short-changed for the services from the state of California for the California Highway Patrol on the state's Highway Route 1. There's really no excuse for this. It took special legislation of this state, and I'm not so sure they all noticed what they were voting for when they voted for this, but we got spanked really good. And in about 1992, the CHP left Malibu, and a special proviso was determined that the city of Malibu, since we're so rich, we have to pay for the CHP if they are to come and patrol the state highway in the limits of the city of Malibu. And there was a lot of politics behind it, which probably is not a good place for civility here, but that's what's plagued this city. The city's own calculation was that 60% of the funding that is annually required to supplant those services is the number in your budget tonight for the Sheriff's Department. Really, 60% of their work is on traffic, law enforcement, responding to accidents, and so forth on PCH. The figure tonight, tonight's the first night that you pass a budget where there's more than $8 million, it's now $9 million, for law enforcement services, and 60% of that is $5.4 million. That'll be this year, and next year it'll be even more. And it's been this compounding problem for two decades. It's time for you to change your legislative agenda and reclaim this essential service, which is paid for with vehicle registrations and income tax and gas taxes. which is paid for with vehicle registrations and income tax and gas tax and all sorts of other things that are feeding the state. And they retreated by pulling a fast one legislatively. They didn't know where to put the legislation to spank us. They put it in the California Vehicle Code where you don't turn right on a red light and you have to have a light on above your license plate. It's 2,400.6 in the vehicle code that needs to be added to your legislative agenda that you pay $12,500 a month to a lobbyist for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, that wraps up public speaking and we're back up to the council for comments. I think we'll start with comments first. We can either go from right to left or left to right. Oh, right, we have a city manager update, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'd like to start by congratulating Rebecca Nelson on getting her second seven-year tile, this time obviously for a very sad reason, and to thank her for being my inspiration over the last seven months and, and having strength and showing up at work and helping other people while she was going through a really hard time. So, I'm very glad that we were able to provide her that. She's actually been with the city since 2005, so she's earned that tile more than once. You may have noticed that the anchor sculpture is now up in Legacy Park, so thank you to both our Public Works Department and our Community Services Department and the Cultural Arts Commission who helped make that possible and will be arranging a ribbon cutting for that for the public to attend. I also wanted to announce Chris Oras, who's our new recreation supervisor who's joined the city recently. Chris comes to us with a long background in parks and recreation, most recently with the LA Arbor Rhythm, so we're really happy to have him here on staff. So if you get a chance, please say hello to him. And I wanted to also thank the staff who made it possible to get our seventh permit issued today. That was a, another happy moment here at City Hall. And Caroline, I just wanted to let you know that the view, primary view ordinance will be back in front of the council in August. So I know you went to the Planning Commission and we're working on the item that will come to the city council. We only have one meeting in July, the city council meets only one time on July 8th, so that ordinance will come forward in August for adoption. So hopefully that'll address your issues and then later this evening, as part of the budget, the city council will consider adopting a resolution to waive fees for rebuilding. So, that's the good news for this evening and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Looks like we're okay. So, would you like to start right to left or left to right with commission and subcommittee up meetings? Wait, okay, Rick, did you want to start at your end?
I'm happy to start. Ted Silverberg, thank you for coming down and saying positive things and being a positive force for everything. I want to make some comments about what you said, but it's really nice to have you down here. And I think that you, like so many of the people in the audience here, have embodied what is so great about our town. You've given up your own free time, you've done a lot of things for other people, you've picked up the ball and done creative enterprises and organizations and gatherings of people and it's all been super positive. And I appreciate you coming down amidst all the negativity and bringing something positive that's a great symbol of our wonderful town of Malibu, as many of the other people are here also, but I wanted to just say, Ted, thank you very much for that. I'll talk about what you talked about in a second. I want to review a few things. I went to the Safety Expo, Fire Expo, whatever you want to call it, at Trancaut's Park, which, or Trancaut's Shopping Center, excuse me, which was a very well-organized event by Andy Cohen, my Public Safety Commissioner, did a lot of very hard work at it. I hope some of you got to go there. They had some panel discussions. I was on a panel with Dermot Stoker, Matt Haynes and Jerry Vandermeulen, and there were other people who spoke on a number of topics, there were vendors and so on and so forth. And that's one of the little pieces of the mosaic, along with the things that Lisa talked about, the disaster notification upgrades and, you know, our improved communication and everything, it's all part of a big picture that's going to improve our overall readiness. So I encourage everybody to take advantage of those things as they come. You may get one little idea from talking to somebody or see something that can be the key and decisive thing that will mean victory or defeat in the next disaster that we have. Promised I wouldn't say um, but there I go, I just said um. Also attended a, I actually did this while I was working for the Fire Department, Malibu West Fire Brigade's little training session for their new recruits, which was really motivating to see how, I, I consider those guys to be the gold standard, as I always say, of neighborhood readiness groups and Dermot and Tim and Mikey's down there was a part of it also. They've done a really wonderful job looking out for their community, they've got a great track record, they're expanding their capabilities and buying a bunch of equipment and they had a bunch of people out there doing some really cool training at Malibu Park and it was really a wonderful display of teamwork and camaraderie. And anybody who's thinking of doing that and getting their neighborhood a little more together, I would contact those guys because they, they, they've got it going, they know what they're doing. On the, there I go again, another um. Next gen, the FAA issue that I haven't spoken that much about, the air traffic routes that are going over our city that were changed kind of without checking with us, just want to report that a number of our elected officials, I'm going to read them all, Adam Schiff, Peter DeFazio, Brad Sherman, Helen Rowde, Alan Loenthal, Karen Bass, well, I'm going to read them all too, there's too many of them, but there are congressmen in California, sent a letter concerning the routes and they sent it to the Comptroller General of the United States. I always think it's good to go after the guy who controls the money, but it addresses all of the issues that went into the decision-making process of changing the routes and did they adequately address all of the, what I would describe as human factors, the impact on residential areas, et cetera. And it's good. I think it's a good, significant step in the right direction because I do believe that the route ahead is more, has more of a political solution than it does a legal, i.e. courtroom solution. That's good because it's cheaper for us, but it is more complex. But it's nice to see that a number of our elected officials in California have been paying attention to, our federal officials, I should say, have been paying attention to what we've been telling them, a number of communities, and they're willing to take action. This is hot off the press, just happened on June 18th, so there will be more. There's also House Resolution 976, which is, addresses the same issue and I won't go into the details there, but it's up in the House of Representatives and addresses the same issue. So I know I've been kind of quiet about that recently as I've been dealing with the fire, but I wanted to give a little update on that. It's not dead and maybe there'll be a happening, ending in that, but I do think it will be a long and arduous road. It's probably one of the most significant challenges that we face, but there is progress, which is good. We had a school separation ad hoc conference call this afternoon with the lawyers who are working with us, and I won't go into the details about it, but I just want to say that Karen and I are, as well as the city manager and Elizabeth Shavelson, who's involved in this, are ardently pursuing the school separation issue. It is the number three priority for the city of Malibu this year and I'm happy to say that I think all of us are in, working well together and definitely in harmony and it's actually headed in what I think is the right direction, but that's going to be a gnarly challenge also. Don Richstone, got your comments there on the TDSF cast system? I don't think we have a cast system. You might say that we already have a cast system, you know, if one guy with a big lot can build a bigger house than a guy with a small lot, so it depends on how you look at it. But I appreciate everybody's comments about this TDSF thing. We're not trying, no one's trying to pull a fast one on anybody. I'm sure there'll be robust discussion throughout, but all of the comments are very welcome. I appreciate that. Ted Silverberg, as I said, thank you very much for your initiative in putting this together. I can't imagine that anyone would be opposed to it. I'm, I'm going to defer to the city manager on what exactly we need to do, but if, if it's just get behind you and there's not much money involved and there's a piece of property that can be used, I'm going to defer also to my surfer buddies down here to kind of give their comments on it, but I'm very much in support of, supporting you in this age of austerity. It sounds like you're coming to the table with something that doesn't require a lot of funding from the city and it's, you're right, it's right at the heart of our, what we're all about. We're a surfing community and we should be supporting our high school surfing team. MRCA, thank you very much, Ranger Johnson, for coming down here and giving us the motivating description of cleaning up a messy area in your newly reacquired properties. I think everybody, you saw the response from everybody, that's really welcome news and we appreciate you coming down here and I hope to see you in the future, giving us all the updates on all your properties. We strive to have a wonderful working relationship with our friends in the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy as well as the Malibu Mountains Recreation Conservation Authority, so it's really nice to see you here and I appreciate you giving us an update on that. The other person who spoke, I can't remember their name, about the TDSF issue says, old Malibu doesn't exist anymore. I don't think that my wife would agree with that. It does exist, it's out there. There's a lot of people who are actually living the old Malibu thing anymore. So, it's, you know, as I say, it's, we can't save Malibu, we can only save what's left of Malibu, but actually I do believe that. And Ted Silverberg is a great example of old Malibu. I mean, he lives simply, he spends most of his time outside communing with Mother Gaia probably more than anybody does, so to say that old Malibu is not here is, I would say, inaccurate, in my humble opinion. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Let's see. I'm sorry? However you guys want to run it? Okay, Karen, we'll go this way.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who has contacted me recently and I've gotten a lot of emails regarding everything on tonight's agenda, a lot of emails about TDSF, about fees and other rebuilding issues. I've had a lot of conversations about a skate park, so I'd like to thank everybody for that and ask you to keep contacting me and the rest of the council. So what I've been up to, it was my great pleasure to attend the Malibu High commencement. Skylar was there as well and I want to congratulate the class of 2019. Kids are doing great things. The speeches were really heartfelt from students only, no outside speakers. And the other great news with Malibu High is that Patrick Miller is returning as principal, so I know everybody will be glad about that. Yeah. And I understand Webster's got a great new principal replacing Patrick. I also was at the Emergency Preparedness Fair, thanks to everybody who showed up, everybody who worked on it, definitely Andy Cohen, if you're watching, thank you. I know that was a huge amount of work, you're very humble about it. It was a huge success with, like Rick said, the panel discussions, the vendors, all of the agencies that were there, the sheriff, the fire department, the Topanga Fire Council, just, it was a great event. It took a lot of work and, and I don't want that to go unnoticed. Mikey and I have met again as part of our Disaster Response and Recovery Ad Hoc Committee. We met with kind of our offshoot, the Communications Exploratory Team. So that group's had two meetings and the third one is coming up this week and we will be incorporating as many of the suggestions as possible into our response and recovery plan. I also, last week, attended the League of Cities Mayors and Council Members Executive Forum. Good news, bad news, all the cities are going through the same issues that we are, so we're trying to talk about these problems and solve them together. And some of the topics that came up were, interestingly enough, constructive communications, social media, homelessness, disaster response and preparedness and land use and planning. So yeah, all cities are dealing with the same issues. It was a lot of fun. Let's see, Mikey was there, Jefferson, you were there, I'm not sure who else in the room was, but Senator Henry Stern had his Third Annual Surf Summit on Saturday and that was a really good event. 10 different Boys and Girls Clubs participated, but the partners hosting it were our local Malibu Boys and Girls Club, Malibu Mako's, and thank you to Tom Corliss and your whole team, they were out in the water with the kids all day long, the Brent Shapiro Foundation, and just thanks to everybody who made that happen, Henry Stern, his assistant Jeremy Wolfe, Casey Ernest and Suhin Konstanta of the Boys and Girls Club, Vintage Grocers, Norm Haney, and many others. I attended our COG monthly meeting this morning. We had our election of COG officers, the budget, and talked about homeless services here in this area. And as Rick said, we'd had another conference call regarding our school district separation. We've got a great team, thank you to everybody, Riva, Lisa, and our consultant and attorney, I think are as good as we're going to get. They're excellent, they understand the issues, they definitely understand school finance, which is super complicated, and I think we will get there and I don't think anybody in the room will disagree, this is years overdue, perhaps decades, so we're not going away till we separate. Public comments. Thank you, Ted. Surf Swap, I know you've been doing this by yourself all these years, doing a great job, so hopefully we can partner and, and get through the logistics of that. Ranger Johnson, thank you for everything you do. That was, what was that, three and a half tons of trash? Yeah, thank you. I know, it's a drop in the bucket, but yeah, that's a lot of work. Thanks for, and thanks for your great attitude, I have to say that too. All right. Primary view determination, I think, is being taken care of. Lance, thank you. Thanks for everything you do. Thanks for being part of Operation Recovery. Thanks for your work on the Public Works Commission, bike lane, yeah, bikes scare me a lot. Anything that makes them safer is great. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Heading down, Mikey or Skylar? Mikey, Mikey's up.
Okay. First of all, thanks to all the speakers, I think Karen said it well, all the emails, all the input's really valuable. Don't know what you're thinking if you don't share it, so thank you very much for that. I'm just going to touch on a few of the speakers. Dr. Bitten, I know that lot very well. I was on the Planning Commission when that went through. I disagreed with that parking plan then, that went through the city, I, it doesn't work, clearly.
Is anybody who said that it was 7 feet? That's really what those lines are supposed to be?
Doctor, we got, well, we have the protocols here that we have to follow, so really appreciate you hanging out and listening to us, but the Robert's Rule say, Mikey speaks and if we want to have you come back up to the speaker's podium, we'll ask you. Thanks, Doc.
I just want to say I hear you loud and clear very much and be glad to talk with you offline about it more. Teddy, you know what, my first memory of when you were speaking was that very first event we did with the Braille Institute at Surf Rider Beach, and I'm guessing was it '86, taking those blind kids out? And I remember that one kid asking me if a, if a piece of kelp was a fish and I'll never forget that, it was really eye-opening. So, you've been doing amazing things for a long time and any way we can support on this, yes, you know how I feel, so, you're awesome, I love you, you're amazing. Caroline, I think your point about us being ready, we're not ready. I don't feel ready. I think it's hard and I think it's, we have to be focused on it. So I know I'm trying to be really focused in my neighborhood and I'm going to speak about that more coming up, but yeah, I, I wish there was a way to go door to door and ask, try and help everybody get ready. I don't know what the next disaster is. I just, you know, I, I look at my house and if there's an earthquake, I know all my dishes are going to fall on the floor minimally, so I don't feel ready. So I think your point's really valid and training. So, I'm going to talk more about that in a minute, but thanks for bringing that up because it's on my mind all the time too. And I'm doing what I can to help this town get more prepared. And I'm doing what I can to help this town get more prepared, so. Paul, I just keep marveling, I just don't know when you got so funny. I just never thought you were funny, but you're very funny now. You've been funny for a few months. I just want to point that out. Well, not like funny-looking, I mean, he's funny.
He looks on everything.
Paul, we know that looks on everything, but your sense of humor is right on.
Yeah, you got an awesome deadpan. It's really good. And I know there's, it's got a kernel of truth buried in there somewhere, but it's awesome. Thank you. Denise, Big Heart Ranch, as you know, we had a nice talk up there recently. I'm so blown away. It's so amazing, seeing what you were doing up there. I, you know, I hear you loud and clear, and I'll leave it at that with the rest of the council, but yeah, what you're doing absolutely floored me, and it's, what a property, what you're doing, the impact was on display that day, and it was amazing to see, and I feel blessed to have been up there, so thank you. And thanks for coming down here today. Besides that, I wanted to, I think Karen said, but I want to thank you, Norm, for supporting Henry Stern's Surf Summit. That's just, and then just earlier, I was talking to someone who's not here tonight, and they're talking about something else you supported. So really, thanks for, it's been notable that you've been supporting local events lately with your pocketbook, and I just want to thank you for that. I thought Surf Summit was a fantastic event yet again, and thanks for what you did there. I thought that was great. The Malibu West Volunteer Fire Brigade, thanks, Rick, for you guys coming out. I didn't know you guys were coming out and supporting. That was, that was great and unexpected. I, it makes, I think it made everyone there feel, as we were drinking beers at the barbecue later, that it's like, the relationship with the fire department's great and growing, and we're all in this together, and that was a good feeling. It was good to hear that chatter around the table, and.
Let the record show, we were not drinking beers around the barbecue.
No, no, no. You were not at the barbecue. You were out protecting the public good, and you were not at the barbecue. You had none of my beers. But good event, but we got a long ways to go, and a lot of other communities are starting to reach out and ask for our help. We are going to come out and try and help train other communities. We're just not ready yet, to be honest. We're working hard to get there. We're still getting our equipment together. We're still getting our radios and radio protocols together. We have a little ways to go, but then we want to help other communities be more ready in the fashion that we are, and we are committed to that. So that's what our little Volunteer Fire Brigade is doing, and it's a little bit of a work in progress. It's been, what, seven or so months since I've been on council? And I was just, lastly, last thing I want to say, I was just reflecting that, really, it feels like the only thing I've done since I've been on council is deal with the fire. And that's fine. I think it is pretty much the only thing I've done since being on council. I've been to a lot of people's properties. I've returned hundreds of emails, dozens and dozens of phone calls trying to help people. And it's been really interesting, enlightening, emotional, difficult, every kind of other emotion experience, going through that. Now, that's ongoing. I'm always open, if you are having a problem on your property, I like to come visit it, not just email or talk on the phone. I find that more effective. So I'm still more than open and willing and want to help everyone get back in their home as much as I can. And what I was reflecting on this weekend is that it means I've just not even touched any part of my agenda that I ran on and you guys elected me on, pretty much. So I have guilt over parts of that, even though you can't do everything all at once. And probably the part that hurts my soul the most has to do with rodenticides right at this moment. Just seeing what the fire did and what's going on in our local hills is really, really painful to me, and I'm seeing it and hearing about it every single day. I will report that Assemblyman Blooms' bill, AB 1788, is going through the Senate right now, which would be a big step forward. I'm also having ongoing talks with our city attorney, Kristy, about what we're doing here, and I've had some deep talks with some of you about that. So that item, among many others, is high on my list, so I just wanted to give myself a little pork card that I've worked hard on the fire. I feel like I've kind of failed at everything else, but I'm not giving up and moving forward. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mikey, and Skylar, you're up.
Thank you, Jay. Mikey, I don't think you've failed at anything. And I think that we're all going through the similar thing that you referenced at the end there, where I feel like even those of us that have been on council, I think I've consistently been on council for the longest point of anyone that's up here, and I feel the same way about things that I want to get done. So I echo that. I did attend the commencement for the graduating class at Malibu High School with Karen. I also attended the middle school graduation, the following day, as well as Sam Ojai's graduation, which no council member from Malibu had been to. They don't think that they ever remembered somebody coming, but, and not to say that somebody else had in the past anyways, it was, you know, I kind of went just to really, you know, I guess maybe assure myself of what I already knew of how different the two communities are, as we're going through our separation and whatnot. And it was an amazing thing with amazing students and amazing teachers. But thank you for your continued work on that, Rick and Karen. Rebecca is not still here, but you're going to see this or you're going to hear this, and you're awesome, and thank you. And Julie, Craig, Bonnie, Lisa, Heather, Andrew, Rob, Jesse, Matt, who's hiding, and a couple other people that are hiding, for your guys' continued service to our community during this time where you've all been working around the clock. Ranger Johnson, well done on the cleanup. I know that Mike over there has spent many hours and many a days of his life dealing with the same thing, and sometimes even the same spot. So I feel there's a little bit of city responsibility, because that was our, you know, park before you guys took it back over again, and I know that in similar zones there, the sheriff's department's dealt with that many, many times. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the service in keeping people safe. I would love, if we can get consensus from the council to get, I don't know, Riva, if we would need an item for you to work out something with Ted and figure out a surf swap, or what, you would need direction from council, or you think Jesse can figure something out, or what would be the best way to handle that?
We can certainly bring back an item, but as you recall, it's not on the city's work plan, so it's something that we would have to add to the work plan as part of the budget and move something else off so that we can allocate resources for that. So happy to do however the council would like.
Attended the Safety Expo, Andy, excellent job, as well as everybody else that was there, Jefferson and Rick for speaking, guys did a great job. I took my friend that got paralyzed surfing when we were kids, the U.S. Adaptive Surfing Championship, and we won, so I was really happy about that. I'm super stoked for him. He, his name's Jesse Billhauer. He has a foundation called Life Rolls On, and it's really been cool to work with him over the years and take hundreds of people in the ocean that are paralyzed or quadriplegic and let them experience something that not every, they don't always get to experience in their everyday life. I did an interview with Sam George at the surf contest at Surf Rider yesterday, and what struck me was Rick was talking about community and neighborhood. And one of the comments he asked me is like, well, what is it about Malibu? And I immediately was like, it's the sense of community in your neighbors, and that's something that I really appreciate and love this community for. I always remind people when they move here that they should get to know their neighbors, because you never know when there's going to be a problem, and it's always important to know your neighbors wherever you live. So for any of those of you that are moving to Malibu or missing Malibu, get to know your neighbors. It's always a good place to start. I will be attending a, two CPA meetings, one board workshop and meeting this week. Two different days I'll be spending in downtown Los Angeles. Looking forward to that. Tom, thank you. Norm, thank you for supporting the Henry Surf Summit. I was unable to be there this year. I was planning on, it didn't work out. And thank you, Henry, wherever you are in outer space. Bert, thank you for the kind words. As a former elected official, you're always a good voice of reason, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate you coming and saying those things, given everything that you've had to deal with in the last seven months. And I want to thank the gentlemen from SCE that are here, or that are not here, they're not here, but the SCE crews have been working around the clock to replace a lot of the pools that are not up to par. I know that's something that they're required to do, but I've seen them doing a lot of work up in the canyons in certain places, and I appreciate them, because that's making our entire community safer. And I want to remind everybody, when you're going in the ocean, if you don't know what you're doing, please swim near a lifeguard. It's kind of a common sense thing. We've had a handful of surf lately, and if you're going, you're bringing people out to the beach that don't really know the ocean, swim near a lifeguard or check in with the lifeguard before you go in the water. It's a smart thing to do. And, you know, just remember, it's their job to make sure that you get home safely at the end of the day, so I hope that everyone is having a good start to their summer.
Okay, thank you, Skylar.
I did want to see if there's consensus from council if we bring back an item to allocate some funding to Big Heart Ranch. And I know that we have, we have some money that we had left over, and I don't know if we can do that now, or what the best.
Is that an A&amp;F?
Wasn't that an A&amp;F?
Yeah. Do we need to send that back to A&amp;F, or I'm asking you?
I'm looking at Trevor to see if we need to, if we can discuss that as part of the budget this evening, or it needs to come back as an item.
I think that we're dealing with that in the budget, so we could probably discuss, you know, bringing back an item about that when we get to the budget item.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Skylar. My committee updates briefly, and then I'll get to public comments. I attended the mayor, Mayor's event with Mayor Eric Garcetti. We had a discussion on homelessness. His city was 60,000 confirmed homeless. It's quite daunting when you get into the details of a large city and the problems that they have, and we've been seeing it on the press. So I took a couple of good ideas from him, and I'll bring them forward later. I thought it was a valuable meeting to go to. At the meeting, we also discussed what I considered the motor homelessness, so motor homes. And it seems to be an impact that he's having to deal with on his city streets, and that from the phone calls and emails that I've received, the motor homeless is going to be a rising situation for us, and we're going to have to deal with it as a city as best we can. We may have to use the CHP, and what I suggested to Mayor Garcetti was to also enlist the California Vehicle Code in making sure that the motor homes are properly running and effectively tagged and insured, which you can do during an interview if you're LAPD or LASO. It's part of the protocol of your introduction to finding whether that motor home is capable of being on public streets, and if it's not, having it removed. So I'll bring that forward again. The other meeting that I went to, the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission meeting, where I did mention the over 1,000 emails that we received on the concerns at the Adamson House and the removing of the sand there due to the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission and the job that was done by State Parks. And I always call it a job that still needs help, and it still needs to move forward and be progressive. Not that it was a bad decision to do the lagoon project, but it still needs work. And so by the language skills of it still needs work, I actually got people to start listening to me. So now we have not only all the surf clubs that signed in the petition, but Surf Rider Foundation National. So as we bring awareness to the situation and a little bit of diplomacy, we may be moving forward so that Andy isn't left out there alone with his shovel.
I thought we were getting him a bigger shovel.
Skip loader. Okay, moving on then, so the two meetings, I did go to the Fire Expo. Interesting to see how people are preparing for the future, as we will have a fire, hopefully down in the East End, we get more of those people attending down at the east side of Malibu, from Malibu Canyon to Topanga. We're moving forward with that plan. Somebody mentioned, do we have a plan? We are working on that. Hopefully, the numbering system works with TSEP so that we start at one end and go to the other, so there's no confusion for outside visitors, which are also our mutual aid firemen. So we'll get into the details of that, so it's not being overlooked. Onto public speakers. Most of my council members spoke to everybody's concerns. One person that didn't get spoken about, Ryan, Brian, Bert, Andy, and Ken. I'll start at the bottom, Ryan. The CHP is fully aware of our situation. When I was back on council, the first time I went with council member Cybert, several occasions met with the commissioner of the California Highway Patrol, and at that time he kept saying, "Look at Santa Clarita. It's just not you, folks. It's Santa Clarita." He was using it as a comparison. So we tried, we're still trying. Maybe we put California strategies on something like this. Just a possibility, because we are spending 10,000 bucks a month. Maybe we'll give them a mission and maybe get something done for us. Brian, TDSF. You heard all the comments from the other council members, just wanted to make sure that you weren't left out. We will be working on it. It will be conjugated, and the sausage will be made, and you'll be very appraised of it. You're not going to be left out in the dark. We're not doing it in the dark. It's a long process, and we're starting now. Bert, thank you for your comments. Trying to bring civility, that's always a hopeful here. As you see, it sometimes gets ugly, to put it simply, but thank you for bringing that temperance to the discussion. Andy, always welcome here. Please keep us where your comments, I don't know where you are, but, oh, you left, okay. And then on Ken Luskin, nobody wanted to touch that. Ken, you had seven speakers. Thank you for your comments. It's not that we're overlooking you or your comments or the minutes that you got. It's, for me, you spoke of a whitewash, and until we get the evaluations that you discussed and the evaluation on the committee that I am on with Sheila Kuhl and the state and the county, I like to have a comparison and speak with some education about a topic that you discussed. So I will bring that forward. I know it's, it looks like it's a long-term wish. It's not. We received another invoice from the Evaluation Committee, and I have no problem discussing it with you. But I'm, for myself, I have to have comparisons to make decisions. And when the Sheila Kuhl review comes out, then I will have something to review it, and then I can make a fair opinion. And thank you for your time. Okay, we're moving on. We have comment slips here. We're moving on with the agenda. Now we'll pull some items. Trevor's looking at me. What are we going to pull? Okay, so I have to do this quickly. From the public, we have polled 3B9. From the public, we have polled 3B11. And from the public, we have polled 3B13. And I would like to pull 3B8 for discussion. So 3B8, 3B11, 3B13, and 3B14 I'm pulling, for clarity. And there we go.
Mayor, may I make a motion to pass the consent calendar, pulling items 8, 9, 11, 13, and 14?
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Starting with 3B8.
Starting with 3B8. Quick comment on 3B8. I discussed it with the city manager earlier. 3B8 is Tetra, and looking forward to our experiences at the Malibu Lagoon. On page 41, if you want to look, I-9, Task 3.1, Monitoring of Malibu Lagoon, starting upstream. I did have a good look at this. Don't expect you to be quizzed on it, but I would like to make sure that some of this monitoring information is available if we plan to choose to do something with the lagoon management plan on our own. I just wanted to make sure that that was out there, and it seemed fair after that. I'm done with my comments on 3B8, now that we know Tetra is going to be monitoring and helping us with our evaluations on the lagoon project in the future. We're good to go?
Or does there anyone want to comment on this? Does anyone want to comment on this?
Speaker slips on 3B8, because it's pretty detailed stuff to put you to sleep, so...
Okay, then you can bring it back to the council for...
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for confirmation.
So then we need a motion to approve item 8?
Okay, motion to approve item 8?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the next item that was polled, 3B11. We have...
I think it's 3B9.
Oh, 9, right, 3B9. Okay. 3B9, we have speakers. Okay, we have Ryan Embry, speaker on 3B9. Ryan, sir, you're up.
So this is a, if I understand, it's a maintenance contract for three years, and it's for the city parks. And the forbidders that are before you, this is the third highest. So it is the recommended bidder, it's staff's pick, but I would like to hear more as to why the extra $34,000 a year for three years, which is 100 grand, is the justifiable reason for not selecting any of the other two bidders, and I bet you the other two bidders would like to know the same thing. You don't have to pick the lowest bidder, but I understand that the staff has now modified the contract for the chosen bidder at $399,000 a year, instead of the $365,000 bidder, and that you, the reconfiguration and a scale-back of the scope of the contract occurred, and I don't know if that's fair to the other three bidders, that maybe they didn't want to do the city hall parking lot and so forth, and didn't have a chance to compete against the reconfigured scope. So it is kind of a business decision, of course. I understand that there's been angst with the previous contractor. And lastly, the principals of the firms, I'm just wondering if they've not morphed around a bit, make sure you're not hiring the same people under a different configuration of business entity here in the process. But it is a lot of money, most of these service contracts get renewed and go on for additional three years, and three years, and three years, and so forth, so if this is a considerably higher cost, it's likely to perpetuate. So I know you're talking about budget a lot tonight, but money's money.
Thank you, Ryan, and we're back to the podium up here, and any comments? Jesse, would you like to comment?
I would love to comment, good evening.
Okay, thank you.
So first I want to say that we, we did select Enhanced Landscape Management, and this contract will handle Malibu Bluffs Park, Legacy Park, Lost Flores Creek Park, Tranqus Canyon Park, the planners on Cross Creek Road, which was not, has not traditionally been included in our old contract, and then three medians within the Civic Center area here. So we went through the process, the RFP process, which ended in May, and we went through interviews with firms and selected Enhanced due to several things, most importantly, their ability to effectively manage the contract based on our wants and needs, I guess you could say. We did work with them to reduce the cost. Yes, City Hall was removed from their proposal. That was actually noted to all of the firms during our walkthrough and during the bidding process, that we expected City Hall to be removed from that, but we asked them to bid it anyways, just in case the council decided not to approve other items that will help take care of City Hall as we move forward, which were approved within the proposed budget. So with that, we thought that they also bid a couple of items, just not how we thought they should be bid. We thought they put a little more time or hours into a certain park where obviously legacy is our biggest issue. So we had them, we had them revise that, and that is within our duties that we can do once we select a contractor. So the new amount is 376,000 annually, just over that, and that actually makes them the second highest amount within the four.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Any comment from council? No, Mikey says second lowest. Okay. Okay, well, I didn't delve into it that deeply, I just looked at the numbers as well, like many people did. I guess we'll have a motion here?
Yep.
Can I get a motion?
Yeah, a motion to pass, 3B, what number is this, 12?
9.
9, excuse me.
3B9, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 3B11, let's see, 3B11, we have a public speaker on 3B11, and Mary Ann Riggins, you're up.
Thank you, Mary Ann, council members. I was just looking at the work plan that you've got identified for both Public Safety and Public Works, and one of the things that would be very nice, and I see it on Public Safety, is the addressing of the street lighting within the city of Malibu. I'm not sure if you're aware, you've just got on there to work with Southern California Edison, but Los Angeles County actually does have a maintenance district with regards to maintenance of the lights within the city of Malibu. It's on the LA County website, so I was just hoping that you could also include working with Los Angeles County with regards to that, and also getting an accounting of any monies that may be set aside from our tax dollars that are within that maintenance district. I've tried to look on their website to delve into it, I've seen vague pointings towards some pot of money or something or another, but I really can't find anything to get any hard numbers if anything exists, and maybe that would help to actually improve the lighting that exists in our streets to make them more Dark Skies compliant, and also make them better fixtures to improve the safety, both on Pacific Coast Highway and on any of our city streets that have street lighting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann, and we're back up to the council on 3B11.
I mean, Jefferson, I'd like to make a motion to approve this, but I would like that to be added to the Public Works, for them to look at that, if we can add that to their agenda, Reva?
So can you specify exactly what you'd like added?
I would specifically like them to work with LA County and to delve into the street lighting program for which they get tax, or, you know, money from different things for, and see how that can be implemented so that that can work into our Dark Sky program.
Okay.
And that's what I would like to see done, and I would also like to see for our Parks and Recreation Commission, if there's a way for them on their workload to add the surfboard swap thing that was mentioned earlier, and see if they can work that into working with TED and coming up with a non-expensive way for the city to get that program to happen.
Just need council agreement on that.
A no-cost way, I think would be the better way.
No-cost way, yes, a no-cost...
In the age of belt-tightening austerity.
Not a cost-prohibitive way, a costless program.
Yeah, I'll support that.
Okay. Same.
Okay, so we'll have to reread that and add, make those additions, it sounds like we have consensus.
Do you have clarity on the additions? Yes? Okay.
So the motion is to approve the assignments per staff recommendation with the additions that you, that you...
Skylar mentioned.
Please.
Councilmember Peak, maybe we could also add that the youth commission could potentially be involved with the surf swap?
I would love to see the youth commission involved with that, that would be awesome.
Excellent creative solution.
And especially the youth commission members that maybe are on the surf team.
There goes all, there's those community service hours right there, which is part of the commission.
Hey, we're not closing out 3B11 here, because I got another comment.
Well, I had a, do I have a second, or do we have a...
Second for discussion. Go.
Yeah, on Public Works, I asked my Public Works Commissioner and all my commissioners if they had any input, and maybe I get an answer from a Public Works gentleman about the feasibility of this. My Commissioner is Jim Palmer, and one of the things he requested was on item number eight, where it says, "Make recommendations on a comprehensive inventory and map identifying the location and ownership of all drainage devices within the jurisdiction of the city, county, and Caltrans, that it also result in a map that's accessible online potentially." Can you speak to that? Is that adding more complexity, or you know what I'm talking about?
Well, to do one comprehensively throughout the whole city is quite expensive. We, we do have a grant through FEMA to map out some of the areas in the Malibu Park area, but to the rest of the city, we need additional funding and resources to make sure that's all mapped out really well through GIS or other, other means, just to get better accurate data from this form of storm drain system.
Yeah, I mean, your item number eight says, "Make recommendations" on it, and I was just saying that maybe the end result of that whole thing, once it finally gets done, could result in a map that's online. Is that, is that possible?
So, so first, we would have to put together kind of a scope of work for a consultant to actually put together what we actually need. We developed kind of a scope already to, to, to get this work done, it just needs work and assistance from consultants to actually do the work to map out those storm drains, take pictures, and make measurements of, of all of those facilities.
That will result in a map?
Correct.
Okay, good, that's how I was getting at it, thank you.
Could I also chime in on that one, too? Little bit of history here, because Rick brought something up that's very valuable to the ecology of the city here. The NRDC lawsuit also had that part of the draft settlement, which Kristi Hogan brought forward to us as a city back in, oh, 2010, 2011. Those, there are 1,100 drains that they identified in that lawsuit, and a lot of this work has already been done, it's just finding out where it is. Also, considering that we may have MS4 deficiencies, is another reason to map these drains, and the TMDLs, some of the drains are going to have different results, but all of this is defensible later on. If we just take a good look at it now, I know it sounds like it's a late-minute pitch, but I think Rick hit this on the head, and so did his commissioner, so if you want to get with me afterwards, I'll kind of give you a guideline of what we went through to save some time and energy, but get this map done.
So just to clarify, I have no changes, I just wanted to clarify that that was part of what was being done in number eight, though, thank you.
And the council will certainly have an opportunity to weigh in on this when it comes forward from the Public Works Commission as a recommendation for action and for funding.
Thank you.
So first for me, a second from you, and a roll call?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, we had several speakers on 3B13, 3B13. First speaker is John Maza. John, you're up, sir.
Good evening, you're all so well dressed tonight, I don't, I should have dressed up. I just want to mention on the last item, Heal the Bay has, has also did a study on every single outfall, and they paint above the drains the little circle with a fish in it, and this goes to the sea. So you might want to, they're called something else now, but get a hold of that map, we had it at one point. And now, we're dealing now with a contract where we have exactly the same product by all, everybody bidding on it. I used to run a newspaper, a column inch is a definition, it's like a foot, you cannot change it. And when you're charged by a column inch, every newspaper in the world charges that way. Now, we're picking the highest bidder, so to be fair, you should have a reason to pick the highest bidder. Both papers are owned by local people, residents of Malibu. Both come out with exactly the same product, and although the staff report said that the Surfside News missed a deadline or something, we have no report on how many deadlines the Malibu Times missed when they ran it for 10 or 12 years. So, or whether the staff is responsible for the deadline miss. But we're talking about money that is not yours, it's spent by applicants for permits. You want to split your lot, you do a legal lot thing. Now, it runs through the city, but when you pay more, you're charging somebody more, okay? This is an expense that has absolutely no difference. Now, I know one, the Malibu Times principals have been around a long time and done things for the city, but that has nothing to do with the services they provide. They provide a service required by law, required by our planning department, and it's like buying a Chevy for $5,000 and buying one that's exactly the same and the same color for $10,000. Now, the numbers aren't that different, but in this case, they are exactly the same product. If you change it at all, you change the font size or anything, it's now illegal. So I think you, you've got to consider what bidding is all about, and what, what your responsibility to the public is on spending their money. Should you pick somebody because you like them, or they make endorsements, or whatever, it changes the perception of how people look at the way you make decisions. So I think you should really reconsider, this is the only contract that I've seen that's exactly the same. There is no possible way it can be different. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mary Hogan, our second speaker on 3B13. Mary, you're up.
Thank you, Mary Hogan, with Sales Director for Malibu Surfside News. And thank you, and we do appreciate our work and relationship with the city. Andrew Nix, who you know as our president, would be here this evening, and he sends his apologies, but he and his wife just gave birth to a new baby boy this weekend. We do want to acknowledge in the staff report that we did have, I believe, three errors during the course of the 24 months we've been doing the legal notices for the city. During that time, we have put together some really good, strong safeguards to prevent that from happening on those mistakes, and just want to share those safeguards with you so those don't happen again. And we very much appreciate the acknowledgement by the staff that we've made these good-faith efforts and continue to do so. There have not been an error in the last six months. We've heightened our sign-off process in terms of the number of eyes on the notices, including our Director of Operations. Our president signs off on the legal notices for Malibu, City of Malibu, before they go to print. And lastly, we've done some new hiring and brought on especially someone to do our legal notices with extensive experience with civic and law offices, actually working through publishing within 10 states on those notices, so there's strong experience there. And we ask you to vote no on this issue tonight, and reconsider and reevaluate Malibu Surfside News for those notices. The reason why we want to bring this to your attention, we believe there's two issues that have been highlighted in terms of the bid. One is the exclusivity of legal notices, and secondly, non-exclusivity, display advertising. For instance, and correct me if I'm wrong later, the Expo, the Library Speaker Series. We ask that you reconsider this because we believe we are your best option. The spirit of the law is to inform the residents of Malibu. Our publication reaches more households, two times as many households than the other publication, Malibu Times. Just for this year, publication published information, 5,000 households that we mail to direct via US mail versus 2,300. So your message is in those homes directly, more so than any other way. Also, in terms of any reference to size of publications, when it comes to legal notices, the legal notices are the exact same size in those requirements, so we ask your consideration of that. If there's other publications or distribution of newspapers throughout the city, there's no guarantee of readership, no better guarantee than delivery with the US Post for that. And lastly, we want to continue to be your partnership. The Malibu Times is up for sale as a publication. I'm here to say, at least from Andrew, our manager, to let you know, we would be in it for the long haul here for over two years, as far as your partner in that.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
We have one more speaker, Arnold Jork. Thank you, Mary.
John, as usual, gets it partially right. If you read your, the report...
If you read the report from your staff, you'll see that we have, that ours was, 95% of it is display, 5% of it is legal. That's their estimate of what it would be. And our legal may be a little bit higher than theirs, but our display is lower. And at 95%, I think that pretty much speaks for itself. As far as distribution, we have, ours is a request of publication. That means you've got to ask for it. Theirs is sent just mailed. We've had people who have individually requested it, and that's why we had, that's the number we have. We also distribute to 70 locations within the city, all the coffee shops and things like that. Anybody's been out there in the street sees the difference in, we distribute our products differently. We decided, quite frankly, that half of the things that get sent to the homes, if people don't request it, ended up in the trash can. That's why we put them out in places where people would pick them up, all the high-traffic areas, coffee shops and such. I think that this was, also, we've been in the legal business now, I have, for 31 years. We deal with foreclosures all the time. These foreclosures in this area, half a million, a million, a million and a half, you mess up on those, the date of sales get messed up, it gets very expensive. We have a system and people who are very experienced have been doing it for years and will do the same with the city's legals. Also, there's, you know, there's a question of flexibility, too. Sometimes the city gets, needs, needs extra time. I mean, they're supposed to get in by early Tuesday morning, but the fact of the matter is sometimes it's just impossible. We work with them. We work with all of our vendors who, all of the agencies that put in legals, late-coming, late-arriving things, things of that nature. I think that this was a fair bid, and I'd ask you just to affirm it. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnold. And so we're back here on 3B13. We're back to council. Any comments?
I would say, I just want to say, in my dealings with both papers, they've been excellent, wonderful people, great to work with. It's pretty hard, sitting here, for me to know beyond that they're both great people and great experience working with them. They all readily took my campaign money and did a great job with it. So I get stuck here without more input on going with staff recommendation because I don't know better, to be honest. I'm not in the hot seat on dealing with this every day, and so I would trust staff, but I'm obviously open to other comment.
I got a comment, or a question, actually. So I think Mary kind of answered it. They owned up to the errors, which was cited in the staff report. And I guess, did Malibu Times ever have similar errors when they did? Is it unusual to have errors? I'm not, I'm not in this business, so I mean, is it like, did they have errors also?
Not that I could see from looking back through our records. Kind of the history of everything was that we used Surfside News up until the point when Anne Sobel was no longer able to publish the paper. At that time, Malibu Times stepped in, and we used them from June 2013 to June 2017, at which point the council had us go back to Malibu Surfside News. As Mary said, they, you know, made good faith efforts to kind of put in some fail safes. And I certainly appreciate that work, but the times that we didn't have things published, when we needed to have them published, caused quite an issue. So it's our recommendation to go back to Malibu Times for a bit.
Okay, another question is, the, most of their full-time staff is not really here as much. Does that create any problem at all? Or is it kind of transparent because you deal mostly online and via phone and email, et cetera?
I would say, you're talking about Malibu Surfside News? Yeah. I would say the couple of issues that it causes is the time delay with Chicago means that, for instance, what Arnold was talking about, where something comes in a little bit later than 10, and we need to get something noticed, it's like impossible. We can't do that because there is that time delay, and they have to, you know, abide by their own deadlines. So we have a little less flexibility there. And we've had a lot of issues with getting our proofs of publication regularly because, you know, it's coming from Chicago to Mary Hogan and then coming to us. So we usually have about a month and a half delay in getting our proofs.
Okay, thank you for that. And, you know, I want to kind of support what Mikey said. It's difficult because we have two, what I consider to be very credible journalistic endeavors in a sea of online chaos out there that are both very good, and it's difficult to make these decisions. I think the last time we did this, it was basically based on cost. And we, you know, they said the Surfside News, essentially Anne Sobel died, and somebody picked up the ball and ran with it. And in a way, we gave the kid, gave the new kid a chance, and they've had it for two years, and they did create some errors. So I would say it's difficult to make these decisions, but you're the one who has to deal with them, so your input is important. And I'm not going to hurt everybody else, I say.
Sure. Go ahead. Okay. Yeah, I'll say the same thing. I have a great relationship with Mary, with the Yorks. I had the pleasure of meeting Andrew when he came out here a few months ago, and congratulations to him and his wife on their new baby. Yeah, this puts us in a very difficult position choosing a vendor when there are a total of two in our town. The delays do concern me with the time change dealing with Chicago. And I'm just noticing here on this spreadsheet that lists the differences in the different size ads, the two columns. This actually is very helpful. So thank you for putting this together, if that was you, Heather. I'm looking at the, midway down the page, legal display ads on this price comparison, and it tells the price per inch, one-quarter page, one-half page, three-quarter page, and full page. So on the one-eighth page, I see that the Malibu Times is $3.55, and the Surfside News is $2.75. That's on the one-eighth page, price per inch. When you go down to the one-quarter page, one-half, three-quarter, and full page, the Malibu Times is actually less on each of those than the Surfside, with the Malibu Times being graduated for each size and the Surfside being just one price for each one. So knowing that, again, I hate to have favoritism on one over the other, but I appreciate this level of articulation from the staff. And, you know, I think it's worth noting that on all of those legal display ads, every size but one, the Malibu Times is actually less per inch. That's all I have to say.
Skylar, you're up.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation and go with the Malibu Times. And then if there's, I would like to also ask Arnold, you know, I think it's a good thing for people to have the paper mailed to their house. And I know that, I think you guys have like a request thing where someone can request it. Is that correct? I'm seeing him nodding your head. You can come up to the mic real quick.
And then Mary, you'll now have a chance to come to the mic as well, after Arnold.
Just...
Yeah, we are what is called a request of publication. That's a post office designation. We went through a whole program several years ago to get people to sign up for it. We also made very much a decision that most people in Malibu, they go to coffee shops, you go to the market and things like that, and we were afraid that a lot of the things that were just direct mail, effectively, if you don't ask for it, it becomes in a small measure junk mail. And this way, we know at least people who have asked for it are going to get it. We also know it goes to high-traffic areas, and we can tell from the way the papers move in high-traffic areas that, you know, the entire run goes out pretty much here in Malibu. We have some in, you know, County Malibu, just around here, but that's people who live in the Canyons and frankly, whose life is in Malibu itself.
Thank you, Arnold. I didn't, I didn't have any question for Mary. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Malibu Times, but if, Mary, you want to come up and say anything else?
Well, I haven't had a chance to speak, so just... Yes, there's a, it's a $70,000 difference. I did look at the same page that Karen did, and being friendly with both papers, but I feel it's fair that you get to answer to Arnold's statement. It's about a $70,000 difference.
Thank you. I do want to clarify, though, as you look at the distribution of both papers, our publication is a requestor paper. And as Arnold had said, the public requests it. That's why you see a form on the back page of the Malibu Surfside News, request our paper. It's not to say that a resident, if you don't request it, we're not mailing it. We are. We're actually a CAC audited publication, and of course, our postal receipts, but we are a requestor paper, and over 70% of the community requests us. What, the purpose of that, just for background, is if you have a requestor program in place, you show that and demonstrate it to the post office, so you get a cheaper periodical rate. And so both papers are free and don't have that postage rate. It gives us that benefit in our operating costs to demonstrate that. So just want to clarify that. And if I could also just clarify, if you don't mind, just in terms of the cost, our publication is more cost-effective when you look at, number one, the cost of that display, legal display ad, for instance, okay? Column inch, I think it's a difficult argument. It's not apples to apples, and maybe argument's not the right word, comparison, okay? One paper is a broadsheet, we're a tabloid. That tabloid gets folded in the mail, and it's been the effective way we've used our paper. So a column inch, I think, is not the fair assessment. And that's why, look at that total cost of that eighth page, look at that total cost of that full page, not just for the legal notices, but for the display advertising. And that was the point I was just trying to make, is the display advertising is non-exclusive. The exclusivity part actually is that 5% that was being pointed out. And we're just indicating, and again, we've made good faith efforts, and I'm not trying to overstep your recommendation, I'm just trying to explain our situation. And we certainly, as we have been, would work with you on any of our processes. But it's that 5% we're looking at, really, and that's the exclusivity. And we're saying that's the legal notices, and that's really what the agreement is about.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions for Mary? Any questions from Mary?
I don't have any questions for you, Mary, but I have a question for you, Jefferson, is you said there was a difference in cost of $70,000?
It's a $70,000 contract.
It's, okay, so there's not a difference of $70,000. I just wanted to be very clear about that.
Okay.
It was a $70,000 contract.
May I ask, Riva? We run, the exclusivity part of this is approximately 5% of that $70,000. Is that correct? Heather?
Actually, when I put out the RFP, I had both papers give me exclusive costs for all of these. So every column that you're seeing in every row is a contracted rate. We're, for instance, paying more than the contracted rate here with Malibu Times for all of the display ads that we're publishing there. So it's, these are both contracted rates.
And we have typically, in all the years that I can remember, put display ads in both newspapers anytime we have anything.
Yeah, and that's what I was saying, we're going to continue doing that, is that...
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So what we're really talking about here is just the portion of the legal fees, which is 5% of that $70,000?
The legal ads, yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm, again, going to make the recommendation that we go with what staff has suggested, and that we continue to run ads in both papers when it's, you know, non-exclusive legal notice stuff. And, you know, that's the right thing to do for the public.
That's what the proposal is, to continue on, and with the advertising being equally split, is that something we can put in there on those big ones?
I think the item here tonight is just to approve the agreement that's proposed. So those other items aren't before you, is the...
Yeah, that is correct, Trevor. That's what I want to approve, the staff recommendation of going with the Malibu Times.
But to speak to Jefferson's question, we would still publish as we need into in both papers, but the legal ads would go to the, whatever contract you award.
Thank you for that clarification and understanding. Okay, we're back to the dais. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain. Okay, on, I pulled item 3B14 for some quick clarification. Appreciate your patience through this. On 3B14, I spoke briefly with the city manager. The contract duration is for two years, and we have been a year into this already. And I understand the Woolsey fire was part of the situation for not getting to it sooner. However, in this contract, there is mention of the Woolsey fire, and that's in the first or second paragraph. And I would like to make sure that we understand that we can put a time finality on the STR part of the contract. So if you came to me and said, or to the council, and said, "We can get it done in six or eight months on the STR part," it would certainly advance that, and that way we're not spreading it out over two years.
Certainly, Mayor. We expect that the analysis will be done in the next about 10 to 12 weeks at the very most, so two to three months to actually get the project done. We suggested a two-year agreement. If we need them to come back and adjust anything, they will be presenting at a public meeting, and so we want to make sure that we had sufficient time in their agreement. But we certainly expect the actual project to be done much shorter. So that's our goal with that.
Okay, so I have that with the city manager saying, "Two to three months, let's say four months, we're pretty safe."
I'll make a motion...
Was there anyone that wanted to speak on this item?
No, there were no public speakers.
I'll make a motion to approve 3B14 as the recommended action.
I'll second it with the mention from the city manager that we had a four-month determination on the STR part of it.
Just to clarify, that's the estimated amount of time to bring back the analysis, but you're not making any changes to the contract, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. No proposal changed to the contract, just a time final determination on the STR part at four months. Since I second it, now we have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a request for a utility break for five minutes. It's 9:01. So give us, we'll be back at 9:10. Thank you. As we promised, we have three council members here and city staff. Okay, we're back at the council, and we have public speakers on 4B, but we have 4A, which is going to be moved to July 8th. So we're going straight to 4B.
Would you like a staff report on that, Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening. We are here tonight for the third time to review the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. And as always, I have to thank staff because we couldn't have put this together without them in any year, and especially not this year. They really worked hard, and so... They really worked hard, and so by name, I'd like to thank Ruth Piamon, Elizabeth Shavelson, Renee Neerman, Joanie Hand, Brenda Cho, and all of the department heads who really were in the trenches with me. So this version of the proposed budget reflects the revenue and expenditures through the end of May, and using these figures, we have further refined the numbers that we presented on May 28th at the public hearing of the budget. And it also reflects the council's direction to include waiving of fees for all like-for-like and like-for-like plus 10% of Woolsey fire rebuilding permits. Alex promised me he was going to move forward.
All right.
Hold on. The city's budget is based on the expected revenue for the upcoming year. In fiscal year 2019-2020, the city anticipates receiving $48 million of revenue, including $31 million of general fund revenue. Property tax accounts for 41% of the general fund revenue, and in the version, the very first version of the budget that we presented on April 24th, property tax made up 38%, and this change, again, is due to the removal of fees for Woolsey fire rebuilds, which decreases both licenses and permits and service charges. These had each been 12% of the total and are now 8% and 9% respectively. Malibu's other major tax revenue sources are sales tax, utility users tax, and transient occupancy tax, which together make up another 30%. The proposed expenditure budget is based on the council's priorities and work plan. On April 24th, the council prioritized public safety as the number-one priority, followed by the Woolsey fire recovery at number-two, and school district separation as number-three. Additionally, council postponed a number of work plan items to future years to achieve the waiving of the Woolsey fire permitting fees. The revised work plan for 2019-2020 is attached at the end of the budget and details the city's priorities as reordered by the council. The council typically adds tasks and assignments over the course of any given fiscal year, and staff resources and funds are stretched very thin for the upcoming year. So if council wishes to add an item, another item will need to be removed to make it possible, and at the end of the presentation, when this comes back to council, we would like to get direction on the council's request to add the Malibu Lagoon management plan as a task for the upcoming year. Total expenditures for the upcoming year are projected at $55.1 million. The general fund expenditure budget is $37.4 million and includes not only city operating expenses, but also ongoing expenses related to the Woolsey fire and some one-time capital projects that are being funded with general fund dollars. Other major expenses include $12.6 million of special revenue expenses. The city is required to maintain a balanced general fund every year, which means that operating, ongoing operating expenses cannot exceed the annual general fund revenue for the year. Revenues are projected at $31 million, and operational expenditures are projected at $33.8 million. A $2.6 million decrease in revenues due to the waiving of Woolsey fire rebuilding permits is compounded by the operational expenditures necessary to expedite the rebuilding process, which are projected at just over $2 million. Staff recommends a one-time appropriation of approximately $2.97 million from the general fund undesignated reserve to maintain a balanced budget. When you examine the city's expenditures by department, you see that the largest general fund expense is public safety at $9 million and making up 27% of the general fund expenditures, and that is in line with the council's prioritizing public safety as the number-one priority for the fiscal year. This is followed by management and administration at $8.4 million, $3.8 million for ESD, $3.1 million for planning, $2.9 million for community services, and $2.4 million for public works. In fiscal year 2019-2020, the ongoing debt service on bonds will be $2.1 million, and the Woolsey fire operating expenses will total $2 million. Budgets for the ongoing operational costs and the capital improvement projects related to the Woolsey fire have been separated in their own budget pages to allow for better tracking. Both the operational expenses and the capital costs are anticipated to last for several years. Operational costs are projected to be $2 million, and capital costs are projected at $3.6 million for fiscal year 2019-2020. The proposed budget also includes $8.2 million for capital improvement projects. Ongoing multi-year projects include the Street Overlay Project, improvements to Pacific Coast Highway, and other Measure R projects. There are also clean water projects and minor improvements to city facilities, including electric vehicle charging stations. The solar carport structure at City Hall has been postponed to a future year. The city will also be working on the design and assessment district engineering for Phase Two of the Civic Center wastewater facility next year, using $1.7 million in grant funds. The proposed budget includes funding for 83 full-time employees, the equivalent of 13.5 employees working as part-time staff, and the equivalent of .5 employees working as student interns. The student intern positions were reduced by three full-time equivalent positions for the proposed budget. This was one of the cost-saving measures that we use to achieve the waiving of the Woolsey fire rebuilding fees. All salary ranges, positions, and benefits are approved by council as part of the final budget. The city typically provides an annual cost-of-living adjustment to employees. The adjustment is derived from the Consumer Price Index using the annual percentage from February. A cost-of-living adjustment of 2.5% has been included in the, in the proposed budget. Each year, the council awards funds to local nonprofit groups through the general fund grant program. On May 2nd, the Administration and Finance Subcommittee recommended reducing the available grant amount by $30,000 to save funds for the proposed Woolsey fire fee waivers, and awarded $60,000, $160,000 in grants to 26 applicants. After the publication of the budget staff report, KBO sent a notice to council withdrawing its application. On May 28th, the council referred the reallocation of that $15,000 award to the ANF Subcommittee. On June 10th, the ANF Subcommittee recommended that the $15,000 be held in reserve for grant needs that might arise in the, during the fiscal year upcoming. The proposed budget anticipates a starting general fund undesignated reserve of $24.1 million and an ending reserve amount of $21.1 million. The total of all funds at the end of this fiscal year will be $32.1 million, and a projected ending balance for next fiscal year of $25 million. All the facility and infrastructure repair costs from the Woolsey fire must be completed by the city and submitted for reimbursement to FEMA. Historically, these reimbursements have taken years to be received. In the proposed budget, we are showing these FEMA costs as a liability against the general fund in the amount of $5.9 million. At the start of the current fiscal year, the city had a general fund undesignated reserve of more than 100% of the annual general fund operating budget. This enabled the city to spend $13 million of its reserves to complete the land acquisition in September of 2018, while leaving reserves of over 70%. Since that time, the city has had to use some of the reserves to respond to the Woolsey fire. At the April 24th budget meeting, council directed staff to maintain a 65% reserve while evaluating the fiscal impact of waiving 100% of the like-for-like and like-for-like plus 10% of Woolsey fire rebuilding permit fees. This fee waiver and the projected decrease in revenues after the fire made this direction challenging. Postponing the solar carport structure got us part of the way there. Department heads combed the budget for any and all areas to reduce expenditures in the proposed budget. Finance staff looked at places that special revenue could be used instead of general funds. Staff identified a large reserve in the Proposition A fund balance that could be exchanged with the City of West Hollywood for general fund dollars, and this was approved at the last council meeting. All of these measures enabled staff to present a proposed budget that retains a general fund undesignated reserve of 66% of the annual general fund operating budget. So tonight, we asked the council to approve the council priorities and departmental tasks for fiscal year 2019-2020, and provide direction to staff on adding the Malibu Lagoon management plan and reprioritizing tasks accordingly, and to adopt resolutions 19-27, 19-28, 19-29, and 19-30. And I would like to point out that the dates were updated in the original resolution for 19-30 for fee waivers to correctly reflect the time period of November 8th, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. And that concludes my presentation, and I am here to answer any questions.
Okay, we're back up to council. Anybody like to start?
I'll just make a general.
Well, we do have speakers. I just got, there's a couple. Tom Junior.
Guess I won't.
Are you still here, Tom? Tom is followed by Craig, followed by Mary Ann, followed by Ryan, followed by Denise.
Hi. First of all, I'd say thank you to everybody upstairs and across the hall here, planning the help with the rebuild process, and also the city council and everything they've done, and hearing how you've allocated those funds to, to waive the fees for the fire rebuild. I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that in the language of, of this, that there is something, so my, the property I live at, and I've lived at since 2000, is owned in a trust, and my father lived there for the last five years when he, he got dementia. So he moved in with me, and it was easy for me to help him as much as I could. Recently, about a month or so ago, he, he passed away. I'm looking to rebuild, obviously, and continue to live there as my primary residence. I just want to make sure there's nothing, I, I hope that there's nothing in the way that this is going to be written, which is going to preclude me from having my fees waived in the permit process. Obviously, I'm not a real estate speculator. I didn't purchase this property after the fire, and I'm trying to build some income property for myself, so I don't know what, how this is going to be written or what it's going to be, look like, but I just hope that you guys consider people that are in situations like my own. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And you're followed by Craig. Craig, you're up.
Good evening, council members, and welcome to the live show of Groundhog Day. Several of you wanted some further info on the planning commissioner compensation ordinance. Described in my latest memo to you, I, I found the state enabling legislation that gives rise to our municipal code pertaining to commissioner compensation. This code section says, "The legislative body shall provide the funds necessary or appropriate for the work of planning," and goes on to describe the commissioner's work as a necessary part of that planning. And I've detailed how the commission is different than other commissions, and how the government code anticipates that, and, and that's why we have this inherent expense factor involved in the site visits and the stuff we do that's, that's built into the job itself. So I did some further research and found other cities around us and comparably sized cities elsewhere in the state, and the majority of them actually do pay this, and ranging from on the bottom end, 150 bucks per month, no matter if you come to the meetings or not, in Rancho Palisverdes, up to the high end of 788 per month in Santa Clarita, and Agoura Hills is 100, and a couple other nearby are 100, and that seems to be kind of the, the lower end of the scale, and that's what I'm asking for. And in fact, Malibu is unique in the immediate regional area in not having implemented the code. So for five commissioners, we're talking 12,000 for the year. That's .002% of the $55 million expenditures. It's just like, nothing. The city, by comparison, in terms of value for money and where the city sends, spends money, you pay six-figure salaries plus benefits for some positions that don't even require a college degree, staff some positions through middlemen consultants when it could save tens of thousands by simply posting job openings or RFPs, spend over $400,000 for the Civic Center plan that's just gathering dust now. So the point being, for the work that we do, we're among the best-performing investment at the city. And now, plus with the talented Craig George retiring, presumably, you might have, find a replacement with less accumulated seniority, and you might make up the difference right there in the salary. As for the notion that, well, as I've progressed, I've learned that there are two layers to the job, one being the specific task that we're supposed to do, the quasi-judicial part, and then there's the other part that's the community involvement part, and that part is much bigger than I anticipated, with many more opportunity costs. So I'm just asking, can we just put in that legislation that allows us to cover a bit of the, the bottom end of the, the stated costs? And if you're still hesitant, you could pass the resolution with whatever conditions you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Well done. Mary Ann, you're up. Mary Ann's followed by Ryan, and then Denise.
Thank you again. I apologize for not raising this issue earlier. In past budgets, there's been an allocation, I believe, for the water bottle filling stations at the parks to help reduce the use of either single plastics or others. I didn't notice it within this budget. I'm not quite sure where that stands, if that's something that was in there, but it's just within other costs or anything. So I just ask that that be highlighted and that that program get implemented this year, because it would be really great to reduce our bottle consumption, at least at our city facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you for bringing that up. Ryan, you're up. Evening.
Yeah, I'm going to speak again about California Vehicle Code 2400.6, which was, I call it the getting spanked provision. It says, "For, the commissioner shall enforce all laws regulating the operation of vehicles on and the use of any portion of State Highway Route 1 in the City of Malibu, if requested by the city, and if a contract is entered into between the city and the state," I'm sorry, "the, the state and the city. The contract shall require that an amount be paid to the commissioner that is equal to the costs incurred by the Department for Services provided under the contract." That became effective January 1st, 1993, and as you look at the city seal, that was several years after the city's incorporation. And if you look at the timeline, and I'll read this accurately, because we had a little bit of misinformation earlier, there were four and a half years after this took effect on January 1st of 1993, that a subsequent provision was added sequentially to the California Vehicle Code as 2400.7, which pretty much uses the same language, and however, it is not for Santa Clarita, the city of, it's for the county of Santa Clara, which is Silicon Valley up near San Jose, and is nowhere around here. And it says basically the same thing, but that took effect September 25th of 1997. That was four and a half years after the City of Malibu went through two major disasters, including the 93 fire and the 96 fire. It was a new city, and City of Malibu did not sue the state over this provision, and after four and a half years of getting away with it, they did the same thing to Santa Clara. So I just wanted to be clear that there is definitely and are only two areas, Santa Clara and the City of Malibu, that in 20 years have been hit with this. So we are being discriminated against, and you need to stand up for it and regain the 5.4 million that you're having to spend this year, this next fiscal year, on this law enforcement subsidy to the state. And the state's not that broke, that this is not a bad time to go asking the state for this service to be restored. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I stand adjusted from Santa Clarita to Santa Clara. Okay, and final speaker? Okay, and final speaker, Denzie? Oh, Denise, that's hard, there's no I-N-S-E in here.
Oh.
Sorry, yeah, I, it's hard to read, and I'm sorry, and it's confirmed by the mayor pro temp.
If I didn't have my glasses on, I'd be blind. Just to remind you guys who didn't, if I wasn't clear, Big Heart Ranch has been here for twelve years. We have been providing services to this community, its children, its public schools, for twelve years. Our basic budget is ten thousand dollars a month, just base level, to keep the doors open, keep the animals healthy enough who provide the therapy, and keep the few people that are paid on staff, mostly we are volunteers, and our high school kids are our junior volunteers and get their service hours with us. We are desperately in need of a partnership with the city for the first time ever, not that we didn't want your collaboration prior to this plea. We would greatly appreciate as much of that fifteen thousand dollars as you can possibly spare. As I mentioned, we have been a partner to the public schools and the Boys and Girls Club since its inception. We provide camp for the, all the kids at the Boys and Girls Club, and we provide, I'll call it therapy, for a lot of the kids, like I said, twenty-five are coming tomorrow, for our sessions that are therapeutic sessions for trauma. And that's all I can say. We need your help. I'm hoping very much you agree to give us as much as possible. And by the way, I, it's not my organization, I'm a volunteer there.
Thank you, Denise. Okay, that was our final speaker, and we're back to council. Who would like to start?
Tom, the first speaker about the gray area of property ownership in terms of the waiving and fees, et cetera. Do you want to address that? Anybody have any answer for that sort of a question?
I think that the intent, from what I understand from the council and what we built into the resolution, is that it was somebody's primary residence. We have put into the resolution that property owners will need to show us proof of residency, which can be in the form of a driver's license with the property address, a photo registration card, or other government-issued ID. So in this particular instance, I think you would be able to provide us that, and I don't see an issue with that, but I'll kind of look to the city attorney in case he had any concerns.
Sure. We should confirm with the council, the intention here, the way it reads, is that you had to be a primary resident at that location at the time, and that you are now the property owner, so that would include people that were primary residents, but maybe was owned by their parents if they passed on, they were now the property owner. If they were primary residents at that location at the time of the fire, it would include them in the waiver. If that, the council wants to acknowledge if that's the intent?
I think that that's the intent of everybody up here. I also got an email from somebody where it was not their primary residence at the time of fire, and they were asking for it, and I think that it's, that's a hard situation. I don't know how many of those there are that exist, but I think that we were very concrete when we said that it must be the primary residence. I don't, I mean, I would, if we start going with one waiver, we're going to have.
Yeah, I got a similar one, and, you know, somebody had owned their house for twenty-eight years and just recently moved away, but rented it out, and I'm super sympathetic to that. But their house they're living in didn't burn down, and I think that is the intention of it, as harsh as that sound.
That's not an easy one to swallow, but I think that that was our intention, so I think that we're all on the same page with that, and you feel good with that? Okay. I would like to, if there's consensus from the council, I'd like to appropriate five of the fifteen thousand dollars that we had remaining in our general fund grant that was not allocated to the Big Heart Ranch at this time for this calendar year.
So that's of the fifteen that came back in the grant funds?
Are you all recommending that as ANF committee members?
Well, we, we're not recommending that because we haven't had a hearing on it, we're recommending it because the budget's in front of us right now, and we can make a decision on that right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm making that, I don't know, I can't speak for Rick.
Why'd you pick five?
What we did was, we decided to keep that fifteen sort of on-call, and I think, you know, I'm comfortable that we can pull that trigger in this forum.
I would be, I would be comfortable going up to seventy-five hundred, but I think it's wise for us to leave some money, just because you don't know what else is going to happen over the course of the next year. And if I had a hundred thousand dollars that we could give to them right now, I would do it, we're just not in a position to do that. And I think it's wise for us to hold a little bit of money because we have, we're only, we have many more days of the calendar year, fiscal year.
All of the fiscal year.
Exactly.
Well, we're, yeah, since we're talking budget here now, and we're throwing that off there and coming up with elaborate ways to spend the fifteen that we, we got back from KABU, I've been trying to get something through the city here for a couple of years here. It was on my wish list, my bucket list was for the Ombuds Office. And Riva has reached out, and I have handshakes from both the former president and the current president of Pepperdine University. It didn't go down rank enough, but I know I had consensus from the calendar, and, I mean, from the council, that the Ombuds Office would have some value in the future. And Kristi Hogan has also given her opinion that she finds it valuable, so if I could put a small reserve on that fifteen to be put toward the future of an Ombuds Office in some fashion or form through the legal department.
I think the fifteen is just for the grant program, if I'm correct.
I understand it's a grant, but if.
Well, Jefferson's asking us to remove the money from there. We can allocate it to, back to the general fund, and it could be allocated to the Ombudsman's Office, is that correct, Jefferson?
That's correct. I just hadn't got there yet, but you made the assessment, and that's what I was trying to get to. You didn't get it quick enough.
Could I ask, maybe I've forgotten, could we see something in writing, some kind of a proposal, some kind of a breakdown, a plan for the Ombudsman's?
This, this would not be.
Contribution.
Creating the Ombudsman or awarding it at this time. He's talking about just taking some of that money and laying it aside as budgeted for a potential Ombudsman position, is that correct?
That's correct. And then I can get somebody to put it together from the legal department or from the city, and then that funding is in place from the fifteen that's left over from the KABU, so that I'm not finding new money and not asking for new money, it's money that we put aside.
I would support allocating twenty-five hundred dollars towards that, and that would leave us with only five thousand dollars, it'd be seventy-five hundred dollars to Big Heart Ranch, then taking twenty-five hundred dollars from the remaining funds, and then in putting that back in the general fund and having a line item for future Ombudsman's Office based on council direction on an item that would have to come at a future date. And that would leave five thousand dollars in the general grant fund program for the rest of the calendar year.
I think, if you don't mind my saying, so we're getting the cart before the horse, and we're designating money from the grant program for something that I don't think we really had a robust discussion of how it would function if we really supported. I know it's been bantered about here in the past, but there's been talk about talking to Pepperdine about it, and I know it's, it's near and dear to your heart, but I think we, it's got a long way to go before it's matured as a, an idea that gets presented before the council and to, you know, to dip into the grant money to, you know, allocate it toward a pet project. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that decision right now. I mean, I'm comfortable with seventy-five hundred dollars for the Big Heart Ranch, so I don't have a problem with that, but I think the whole idea of the Ombudsman's Office got a long way to go before we start throwing money at it in the age of belt tightening.
We're talking about twenty-five hundred dollars here, Rick. We have talked about it, we had consensus at the council here some time ago, and I keep looking forward to being this presentation of something that benefits the entire community and relieves us of legal obligations, as Kristi has mentioned, that this is a valuable asset for the future. And if we can't start with twenty-five hundred dollars now, it's not going to happen. So I appreciate your opinion, but I'd like to see how the council feels about it.
Could I ask a question of Trevor? This might be more complicated than is appropriate tonight, but I'm not sure, could you give us some kind of an opinion on the authority that an Ombudsman would have over the city or the council?
If you look at what Pepperdine produces up there in their school that they have, the Strauss Institute, they have this program already up there, and it's a perfect opportunity for new, young attorneys to get their feet wet in the real world. And it has no legal authority, other than you come up with an opinion, if both sides choose to do it, it's elaborated at that point, saving them both going to lawyers, which costs a significant amount of money for both parties. And you may come up with the same resolution that you could from an Ombuds Office. There are seven, Ombuds Office in the County of Los Angeles, there's more than a hundred cities in the state of California that have it, and I've already done the detail work, and that's how I got the two presidents to shake my hand and look me in the face and say, "It's a great idea." And then Kristi also made her comments that it was a great idea and she would support it, and that was all here at the council.
Well, if, I may make a suggestion, that we can at any time reallocate the money that's set aside from the general grant fund program, and if at this time, maybe the best thing to go forward with that would be to bring an item specifically about whatever the plans are that you have for the Ombudsman's Office. The council can discuss that, and at that point in time, we can pull money if we need to out of this remaining seventy-five hundred dollars that would be remaining in the general fund grant program to support something like that. And I'm sure that Riva could have that on as one of your items in the near future, because it seems like you've done a lot of the work, ready to tee it up, is that correct?
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
You got it.
That's correct, Skylar. I did speak with Pepperdine University after the mayor had spoken with the former president and the new president, and the folks that I spoke with said at this time they didn't have the bandwidth to take this on as a program. But I would like to add that I'm going to be very stringent with our work plan with the council, so if this is an item that the council is interested in pursuing, that we do need to add it to the work plan if it comes back as a separate item.
My, my question, is there a budget for this? I, that's, I don't know, have any idea what this.
Not at this time.
I mean.
There's no budget because I can't get any grass, I can't get anybody to buy into it, other than it sounds good.
Jefferson.
No, it sounds good, I just don't have a clue what's involved, I just don't know.
Because we have two new council members, and I think that you would, I think we should just have a, a separate council meeting, an item should be brought forth that's specifically about this, and that's probably the best way for this program to move forward.
Okay, we're moving on then. I got that figured out. Okay.
Could I, could I say one more thing? Since this is the general grant fund that we're talking about, have we received a grant application for this item?
We did receive a grant application from Big Heart Ranch.
From Pepperdine?
No, 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 no.
For the Ombudsman program?
No, it would be, I want to be very clear, we would have to take money that we have in the general grant fund, reallocate it back to general fund revenue.
Okay.
Okay, and then we would, that's how you would work around with the funding, so that you could then use it for something else in the future.
Okay, I hear you on that. So there's no application for this Ombudsman program from Pepperdine or something?
Correct, we can do that at any, at any time, all right? There's not an application from Pepperdine. Jefferson's had a lot of conversations with them. I think a lot of people, including myself, are very much supportive of that moving forward as something that we can offer to residents in the community for resolving things, and we're getting an opinion on stuff, and I think it's very well-intentioned. It's just that we have, as a council, have to have that as a separate item before we can go forth with funding like that on a technicality, but also that's the way to do it. So.
The funding wouldn't have to come from the grant funds either, it could come from other projects or other parties.
Yeah, it would not, it would likely not come from the grant fund, unless somebody out in the community was like, "I want to do this program, give me the seed money to help start this nonprofit, and we're going to start a nonprofit Ombudsman's Office." Right? That's how, that's how those things normally work. The grant fund is designed for both seed money, for a lot of the, you know, new, sometimes old charities, or like in this situation, we know that Big Heart Ranch is providing added services to the community due to the incident that happened, and they also got vaporized, you know, with a lot of the resources at their ranch. I see Denise nodding her head at me. And I think that, I mean, I witnessed that myself, I know that a lot of other council members went up there and visited, or have friends that have visited and taken advantage of those resources. And due to us having more money from people that backed out of it, I think that's a wise move, that I think that we agree on that at seventy-five hundred dollars, is that correct, everybody? Yes, everyone's nodding their head?
Yeah, I'm supportive of that.
Okay. So is there any other items on the budget? I would like to make a motion to approve the budget with this, but I don't know if there's any other big things that people want to change or reallocate.
Well, I was also going to, I know Mikey has some comments, and I have some additional comments.
And I have a question for whenever everybody else is ready.
Okay, I got a few questions. Riva or Lisa, on this budget, I just want to double-check, this is the question I was trying to remember earlier when we talked, I couldn't remember, are we assuming on the fee waiver that we're assuming all projects that we think are coming forward are primary, are primary, and thus qualify for the fee waiver, or we're not, we're just assuming the amount of projects coming forward?
Yeah, so when we, when we analyzed this, we asked both planning and ESD staff to kind of give us their best guess as to how many rebuilds they thought would be coming through in this first fiscal year. And they gave us a number. At that time, we did not analyze whether it was primary residence or anything, and again, we're assuming most of them are like-for-like, we didn't even really drill that down, and they came back with a number of, you know, one hundred and fifty, one hundred and sixty in the first year. Now, that could be double? I don't know. I mean, maybe this fee, the fee waiver will, I think as Craig mentioned earlier, they, they anticipate that we will see an uptick after tonight that people may be waiting to see, but we're just going to have to analyze that as it happens, and we, we're prepared to come back in the mid-year to kind of go over that with you.
So it's a baseline guess, and reality will be what it'll be, including if fees aren't waived, and that's what I assumed, but I just wanted to check on that. This is, I have a few things, this is minor. It's mentioned here about commissioner business cards as being an item, but I don't know if it's in the budget or not, just have to give.
It was not included.
To Jefferson's point, I don't know enough about the Ombuds Program, I don't even know how to say it, but I'd love to see an item come back, and I'd love to see a budget formed. I have no idea, like totally in the dark, but I, I know you've talked about it briefly before, it sounds like a great program, so I'd love to see something come back there. Ryan, if you're still here, I, I had trouble, there you are, I, I heard you, I had trouble following what you were saying. I, I don't think we're going to be able to get into that right here tonight, but it was, it was interesting, and I understood it vaguely, but maybe we could follow up offline on that. Mary Ann, the water bottles, I don't know, I think that's a grant program, isn't it?
There were actually funds included in the current year fiscal, current fiscal year budget that will be rolled over into next year's budget, so it's not called out as a line item, but there is funding to complete that.
Okay. And on Craig's item, I know we were going to, at some point, do an analysis of that down the line, isn't that what the council said in the past?
Analysis will cost more than the statement.
Yeah, I.
That may be true. I know it's not a budget item now, I see that.
I think that if, if you want to bring it back as an item for council to discuss, that I would be, I think everyone would be happy to discuss it, and we can figure out how to, if this council wants to move forward with it or not. I think it's a totally fair thing to do, and I appreciate Craig for looking at what some of the other cities do. I know that even our, obviously, city attorney's office represents some of those cities, I just, you know, we, sometimes in government, go on as doing business as usual and don't change things, but, you know, it's also, we can adapt.
I, I just want to remind the council, and this is just, you're going to get used to hearing me say this this year, you've never heard me say this in fifteen years, we really need to be mindful, and in the past, we've brought items back and appropriated money throughout the year. And until we have a better snapshot of our fiscal stability, I'm going to really caution on bringing back items that require additional appropriations. That could completely change, and we may come back at mid-year with some very good news, but until we have that concrete evidence, I think we need to be mindful of that.
Please start getting lottery tickets. I'm just joking.
Let me make a comment about Craig's thing. Craig, excellent homework, and not a bad idea. I would say your timing is not great in the era of belt tightening, but, you know, you've done some great homework, and you've definitely got the wheels turning, and it may not be for naught, but. may not be for naught, but, so thank you.
You can take it to the Ombuds Office.
That's a good idea. That's a great idea.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget with the requested allocation out of the general grant fund program of seventy-five hundred dollars to Big Heart Ranch. And I thank you, Lisa, and Riva, and every other member of our staff for working hard on all of their belt tightening, and being very vigilant and responsible during this time. So thank you.
Before you move on, Mayor, we do need some feedback from the council on adding the Malibu Lagoon Management Plan to the work plan, and moving something else off of the work plan, as we explained in the May twenty-eighth hearing. If we add something, something else is going to have to shift per the direction from the council at the last meeting. I will be returning on July eighth with a proposed item to issue a request for proposals for a hydrology model for the lagoon, and to initiate an LCPA for a lagoon management plan, and that's going to take considerable staff time. At this time, we're not asking for any funding resources, but we do need the staffing resources to be allocated for that potential work plan item.
Could I make a couple of suggestions on that? In order to do the lagoon management plan, if we could look at some specific items, I'm looking at the basement lightwell amendments, which is number, how do I find this?
It's on page one forty-eight.
It's the third item down.
I think it's important for that to go through, because it kind of clarifies things for builders, and as far as the ZTA goes. And I don't know where that's at time-wise now, but I think that from being on Zerasis and dealing with that for so long, Karen, that that's probably something that we should clarify, which makes planning's job easier.
All right, I'm trying to find something. Another idea is.
We're going to need to find something both from the planning list and from the ESD list, because both those departments will be involved in that project.
So with all due respect to ESD, I'm looking at page one forty-nine, the rainwater harvesting slash downspout redirection program. If that could be downgraded in priority.
I'm getting a nod from Craig George.
Okay. That's a thumbs up? All right, yay, bingo. Okay, so I don't know if anybody has another idea for something from planning, but.
If that one didn't work, then the grease receptor, because the restaurants have to comply anyway for health code reasons, but.
And don't we need to look sort of in the range of near like-for-like on ours? And that's, I know there's an analysis of that somewhere else.
Yeah, we didn't bring that for you this evening, council member, but that is a good point. We're really, at this point, kind of just trying to do a task, and we'll make it work. If we feel that we can't accommodate it, we can certainly come back and let you know that. But I think just in terms of the priorities, the work plan is what we had all agreed we would focus on, and so we're going to have to shift a couple of things off to add the lagoon management plan.
Good times.
Everything on there is very important. That's the hard part of this.
The other thing, Riva, that I would suggest about the lagoon management plan is we've had, and I've had a lot of individuals from different organizations approach and say that we would like to focus on getting the funds and helping put up the funds to make that happen. And I know that there's a lot of.
Let's not get too deep into that conversation this evening. I'm concerned about that since it's not on the agenda. And at this point, I'm not, we're not even asking for funding. We're asking for staff resources, so the use of staff time that's already funded.
Got it. I don't know what you're going to shelve off of planning at all. We're going to have to start working smarter, not harder. It's only five to ten.
I think we're stuck with basements, folks.
I could go with that. We spoke about basements quite often.
Depending on the direction of the TDSF ordinance, it may be something that could be addressed as part of that, because it's related to total development score footage, how basements are counted.
You're thinking about putting the basements on with TDSF?
It could be folded into that ordinance potentially.
Well, folded into it, then. Jiminy Christmas.
The cannabis ordinance is necessary because of.
Laws.
Because of Measure G. Unfortunately, most of the items on the planning priority list are things that are generated from regulatory requirements. The optional ones are the things that have just been very important public policy issues. So that would include the TDSF ordinance, short-term rentals.
Well, I heard a lot of people tonight that would love for the TDSF ordinance to be shelved, but I just do not see that happening. I think that if you're, Riva, if Bonnie's comfortable with putting that into that, can we make this happen? Should we be putting the basement ordinance into the TDSF?
It will help. It's not really a like-for-like thing, but ESD has been taking more of the lead so far in this part of the lagoon. So if they're prepared to do that, then I think it can work.
Boom, shock-a-pow.
So we'll combine the basement lightwell amendments into the TDSF item, and then we'll postpone the.
Rainwater harvesting.
Rainwater harvesting and grease receptor to next year, if that's okay with the council.
That is good.
Sounds acceptable to the council.
Sounds good.
Craig, are you sad that those aren't going to happen on your clock?
Heartbroken.
Heartbroken, the man said. Heartbroken.
Lisa, was that the only item they needed?
Yes, I believe so.
All right.
All right, we're ready.
Do we have a, Kelsey, do you have enough direction for me to make a motion? Okay, so we're basically shifting the things that we just discussed around, and we're doing seventy-five hundred bucks to Big Heart Ranch out of the general fund grant program, and that's what we're doing. And we're getting a budget approved.
And then that's staff's recommendation otherwise?
Yes, sir.
Then we'll have a second?
Second.
Okay, here we go, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again for that.
So we're up four C.
Fastest twenty-seven million I ever spent.
Okay, on four C.
Sometimes on weekends, it's getting crazy.
Good evening, Mayor Wagner Council. So what we have for you tonight is consideration of Resolution nineteen thirty-one. I really look at it as kind of a housekeeping item that we can get through hopefully quickly and get to the exciting stuff tonight. So back in nineteen ninety-three, the council adopted a program for collecting a fee to offset some of the cost of our waste diversion programs with the city, and we've collected that fee every year since. But in certain parts of the city, the majority of the, or not the majority, part of the city has regular haulers that collect that on their bills, and then on a quarterly basis, pay that fee to the city. In the other, in the eastern part of the city, it is the Malibu Garbage Disposal District that's operated by the County of Los Angeles, and they require that we adopt on a yearly basis the resolution so that they can enter it onto their tax rolls, and then it's collected by the tax assessor and then paid to the city on an annual basis. So the motion, or the resolution before you tonight is just simply to adopt that, adopt the resolution authorizing the county to put it onto the tax rolls and collect that fee. And we do this every year, so again, just a housekeeping item, and if there's any questions about that, I'll be glad to answer those.
No questions. I guess we can move forward, then.
Any speakers?
We need to open the public hearing on it.
Well, we have nobody on this item on four C speaking.
I make a motion to pass four C.
Second?
Can we just open the public hearing, ask if anyone wants to comment?
Okay, any comments on four C?
Negative, public comment is closed.
Moving forward, we have a second. Okay, all right, and then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, five A at ten o'clock. Okay, five A. And Jesse Bobbitt, you're up.
Good evening again, Mayor Wagner, members of city council. The item for you this evening is Resolution nineteen thirty-two, adopting initial study seventeen zero zero one, mitigated negative declaration eighteen zero zero two, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and the proposed earth-friendly management policy. You may remember that the council heard this item on October eighth and referred it to the Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee for review. The Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee did discuss the earth-friendly management policy on May thirteenth, and we brought it back before you this evening based on discussion from that meeting. The proposed policy before you this evening is the original policy that was submitted by Poison Free Malibu with minor grammatical changes, and it also includes language that states the Parks and Recreation Commission would oversee the policy, which was something that was brought up at the environmental subcommittee meeting back in May. Additionally, there are certain properties that were not included in the earth-friendly management policy, and the reason for that on most of them is that they were not under the city's control when the initial study was originally assigned and completed. So those include the recently acquired vacant properties that the city acquired late last year, Charmley Wilderness Park, which was under the control of the MRCA, and then the Trancas Open Space and the planters on Cross Creek. So we will manage these properties the same as we would any other properties, as we have been with no poisons, no pesticides, and we would look to, and no trapping. And we would look to amend the initial study and the earth-friendly management policy as quickly as appropriate, so that those are included moving forward.
I was going to clarify that the process would be, there would be an addendum done to the initial study and mitigate a negative declaration to include the new properties, and then an item would be brought back just to confirm that the policy then applies to all properties in the city.
What does it take to do that?
Construction of an addendum to study the additional properties.
Yeah, so there's two ways we do it, and the reason we said as quickly as appropriate is that it's something that the council could assign, and we can move forward with that. Or we could do it with another project that would require some, you know, an initial study or something like that, and addend it at that point. Addend it, I don't know if that's the appropriate term, do an addendum for it at that point. So yeah, so I think that's the overall gist of it. I do want to say that our goal of bringing it forward is, regardless of having to addend it to add those properties, is that we wanted to get it in front of you. We wanted to make sure that you had it, with the understanding, and I know that Keon and I have met since the subcommittee meeting and talked a lot about the policy and how to move forward. But for us, we wanted to get it out in front of you, get the basics of it approved, and then go and do the addendum as we roll through with it. I've given Keon my assurance, and I'll do the same to the council. It will be managed, those properties that are not included will be managed substantially the same as any of our other properties would be. We already don't use poisons. We already don't use pesticides. We already don't trap. We would continue that, and I'm happy to be as transparent and open with that as the council would like. And then one final comment I'll say is that we have heard a little bit of question on why we're not repealing Council Policy Forty-nine, which was the original integrated pest management program that was established, I believe in two thousand thirteen. The reason for that is we didn't want to repeal that without having all of our properties covered. And so we left that in there with the same assumption that the pilot program that council enacted in two thousand sixteen, which is the no poisons, pesticides, or trapping, will remain in effect, and we'll do our best to manage it exactly the same as we would any of our other properties. So I'll say that, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, we still had speakers, so you're done with your presentation?
Yes.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you. And first speaker, Anne Buxey. And Anne is followed by Keon, followed by Joel, and Sherman.
Thank you for staying awake, and I also really thank you for responding to all the public comments. It was so nice to see you. Acknowledge everyone. Thank you. It was civil. Earth-friendly management requires that we change and learn some new habits, clean up after ourselves. We all know that rat poison kills more than rats. The poisons are found in dead mountain lions, dead owls, dead coyotes. Our twenty-some miles of scenic beauty hold some dirty secrets. I still believe a rider must be added to anyone buying property in Malibu, a rider on the real estate contract prohibiting the use of these poisons in order to protect our wildlife. George Bernard Shaw said, "Those who cannot change their mind cannot change anything." These are times when change is being forced upon us. The earth responds to our treatment of her. If we lack the skill to make these changes, take a tip from my husband, bring more brains on the table. John Kin of the Lakondan Maya says, "The roots of all things are connected." When a tree is cut in the forest, a star falls from the sky. He knew about consequences. Thank you in advance for adopting an earth-friendly management policy. Without a sustainable environment, we got nothing.
Thank you, Anne. And Keon, followed by Joel, followed by Sherman.
Good evening, Mayor Wagner, city council members and staff. Poison Free Malibu supports the proposed earth-friendly management policy, and we encourage council members to vote yes. The intent of the policy is to align the city's vision and mission statement to create a program that encourages biodiversity and ensures preservation of natural resources, including the ocean, marine life, creeks, canyons, plant life, mountains, wildlife, and open spaces. The policy promotes a problem-solving strategy that mandates the use of preventative practices and enrichment strategies that promotes healthy soil, plant life, wildlife, and safeguard structures. This green policy will protect the health of citizens and pets by eliminating the use of hazardous chemicals and pesticides, and shifting to environmentally compatible practices. It guarantees the right of citizens, the safe use of city structures and recreational areas. We face urgent health and environmental challenges, and strong action is needed. With the rise of serious health problems, including cancers, Parkinson, diabetes, reproductive failures, developmental disorders, autism, as well as the steep decline of biodiversity, it is time to embrace an urgent transition to green management. Green means protection of the environment, addressing issues critical to sustainability, clean air and water, managing carbon through regenerative soil management, and eliminating fossils, fuel-dependent fertilizers, and pesticides. Organic practices maintain and enhance ecological balance that makes chemical fertilizers and synthetic pesticides unnecessary. The proposal will provide a model for a green future to all those who wish to be released from the grip of the pesticide industry, and incorporate organic standards, principles, and values. These practices are integral to a green future. I would like to thank especially Mayor Wagner and Councilmember Peak for their continuous support of a poison-free policy, and we urge council members to vote yes for this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Keon, followed by your greatest support, Joel.
We may have to call it the Keon Earth-Friendly Management Policy, because you've spent so much awesome time on this.
That was a great speech. I'm actually, I have the honor of representing Pat Healy, who's at the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy meeting right now. And the basic points that she was making was just addressed really by Jesse really well, which was what about those properties that were acquired afterwards? And Jesse. And Jesse just, just nailed it. So, uh, the only request would be to, if you guys could recognize that in whatever way you could in your voting, that those properties will be treated in a pesticide-free manner and will be included by the amendment processes as soon as possible. So, and also, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel. Joel, final speaker, Sherman.
I am so grateful to Jefferson and to Skylar and to all of you, but especially for eight long years, to Keon and Joel for making a difference for these animals. I'm clearly speaking just for the animals, domesticated and for the wildlife, and I'm so grateful for all of you to adopt this proposal, for closing the loopholes. There's no reason to kill these individuals, there is no reason to. The, the reason why we have all this problem is, we as humans, we are so sloppy. We really are. Between the restaurants, few of the homeless, we just don't clean up after ourselves, and that's what the rats and the squirrels do, that's their job, they clean up. They don't create any other problems. So, with that said, let's work in conjunction with Poison Free Malibu, a green policy, let's help these animals continue to live a healthy life. They are members of our community. And again, Joel and Keon, thank you so much. Rats rule, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherman, okay. Skylar would like to start first comment.
Um, I'd like to first make a motion to approve this item with the language that Jesse included about how we are going to make sure that all of the city parks remain free of these toxic poisons.
I would like to second that motion.
You don't actually need any language in there, it might be confusing because the policy already is in place. The IPM policy is how it's referred to?
Yes.
So that's already in place, so unless it's rescinded.
It's not rescinded, it's in place.
Exactly, so it's, you don't need to make any changes to the resolution, it's just clear that it's, remains in place.
The second thing that I wanted to ask, do I have a second on that and we can discuss it?
I did a second.
Okay, and this is actually maybe a question for Jesse and for Craig and Bonnie. I would very much like, as one of those conditions of every permit that is issued from the building department, that one of the little items on there can say you are not allowed to use pesticides or rodenticides on this property. Because we are giving a conditional permit to the homeowner, one of the conditions of them being able to have that permit is they are not allowed to use poison. And I believe that we of the city have the full authority to issue that. And to do that during that process.
You're talking about applying conditions on a case-by-case basis?
No, this is not a case-by-case, well, it is a case-by-case basis, but we give a coastal development permit, we issue permits to people when they ask for something. They ask to build a home, they come into the city, they show us their project, we approve their project. And their approval is a condition, and one of the conditions that I would like to be added to the list of the other conditions that are on there is very simple. You will not use pesticides or poisons or anticoagulant rodenticides, and if you do, your permits are revoked, it's very simple. It's a very, very simple thing.
Okay, well, we didn't agenda is doing that tonight, so we can bring something back in the future to, and talk about standard conditions, that was what you're talking about, and including something along those lines. So, for tonight, we're just dealing with this issue, but I think that's the only one.
But I, do we have consensus as a council that that's probably something that's smart to do? Thumbs up, okay. Anybody else, Rick, Jefferson?
Yeah, I just wanna look into the legality of that, if we can do that, that'd be great.
Probably an important thing to do, I agree with you.
I don't think we'd be able to revoke someone's permits, I'd be, it's something extreme, but it could be, uh, a required condition in some situations, I think we could look more in-depth at the options.
It's important for us to have that conversations, and it's also very important for us to notify both existing and new homeowners of the value of not using poison.
Thank you. Additionally, uh, I want to make sure that I can eat my words, which I called Staff Siberia at a meeting some months ago. And I'm happy to see this come out of Staff Siberia, get to the council, get to the legal, get to the planning staff, and, and, uh, get this thing moving, and, uh, I love eating my words. And this is that moment. And thank you, Keon and Joel, many years of hard, dedicated work that this council is a witness to and your community. And we certainly do appreciate it at a level that I think deserves a tile. So I'll put that forward if we can afford it. Okay, anybody else on council?
I'd like to thank Keon and Joel, we've had some very long talks about this as recently as this past Saturday. I know you've put, I, I can't even guess, ten years, maybe more, into this, and you really just dug the trench, I know that, day by day, week by week, person by person. And I'm glad to see that this is happening tonight. And I thank you, and you too, Joel, I know you've been, you've been in there, but I think, Keon, you're the, you're the primary force, and that's just amazing. I wanna ask Trevor, do we need to create an addendum, are we covered?
The, the addendum is a process to study the environmental impacts of applying the policy to those additional sites. So that's a process that planning will go through, and that'll be brought back with the change in policy. It's not something we do tonight, that'll already be, be, uh, taken on by planning.
Okay, hopefully that's not a long or arduous process since, as Jesse said, we're already using that practice, so I'm hoping that wouldn't be a long, drawn-out item.
You don't wanna hear my Staff Siberia again.
Yeah, okay, so I'm just saying, we're, since we're already doing it, hopefully that won't be a big deal. Okay, that's all.
I, I just wanna obviously thank you for everything you've done, but I just want to say we're not done. There, there's more to do, and we know that, and I'm committed to that, and I appreciate all the help you've already given me, and we'll continue on this path. Thank you.
Hey, congratulations on all your hard work, Keon and Joel. You've been pushing the rock up the hill for a long time, and you finally made it to the summit, so that's pretty cool. But not only here in Malibu, uh, your efforts have gained traction as you've seen through the years on a much wider front with the state of California, et cetera, so you've done a really good job, and, um, thanks for hanging in there for the whole thing, and, uh, you've made it. Well done, congratulations.
You're still rolling the rock on seventeen eighty-eight, we're behind you. Okay, so we're back to council.
I just wanted to clarify that the motion would then be staff's recommendation, and the Resolution nineteen thirty-two is proposed by staff, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, we're back for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're on the finals, six A, six A, you're up. And I think we have somebody speaking on six A.
Mayor Wagner and city council, uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to address for the first time in front of council, our debut. Christine Shen is the environmental programs analyst, she'll make the presentation tonight. But I would like to introduce her to council, I'm sure you'll see her a lot in the future.
Good evening, council, and, I'm sorry, I should've started with Mayor Wagner. My name is Christine, I'm here to discuss item six A, Enhanced Dumpster Enforcement Program. This item addresses the unsanitary trash areas that attract rodents and encourage the use of poisons. The desired outcome is to improve the cleanliness of trash areas, prevent the presence of rodents, and discourage the use of rodent poisons. What we're seeing in the field is a lack of trash best management practices, or BMPs. In the picture on the left, we see a bin with a lock, the lids are open, it's overflowing, the boxes are not broken down, and clearly this business needs to pay for an additional pickup. Um, in the picture on the right, we see a closed lid with, that rats have been able to chew through. Other examples include property staff not picking up litter when it falls outside of the bins. And a lot of these issues can be resolved with proper training and enforcement. The current municipal code requires trash bin lids to be closed at all times, that bins are sufficiently sized, and trash areas kept in a clean and sanitary condition. If not, the city has the option to require locking lids. Based on the existing code, the city can require the responsible party to have additional trash service to deal with overflowing bins like the one we saw in the slide before. Last month, the Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee requested staff to bring the two following options to council. Option one is to bring back an ordinance to amend the municipal code to require solid waste and recycling container lids to be locked outside of business hours for food service establishments. This will require an additional thirty hours per month to administer and enforce, and bring extra costs to businesses for the pickup of locked bins. Though this could be affected for the sites with rummaging issues, our goal is not to penalize businesses where rummaging isn't an issue and they are handling their trash correctly. If chosen, staff will bring back a revised ordinance for the enforcement of locked bins. Option two is to approve the Enhanced Dumpster Enforcement Program. Since the desired outcome is to reduce the presence of rodents and the use of rodenticides, the solution is to have sanitary trash areas. Staff's current approach is an Enhanced Dumpster Enforcement Program. This program stresses education and enforcement and requires locking gibb, bins on a case-by-case basis. The program will motivate businesses and property owners to comply with education, and if necessary, with financial penalties. It begins in the environmental programs staff, where we issue warnings and written corrections. Then it is, if a business is in violation continuously, it is referred to code enforcement, which can fine the appropriate business up to five hundred dollars per day of violation. A large part of the program is working with businesses, property owners, and haulers to educate their staff on best management practices. This began last year and continues. We've mailed a letter to all commercial property owners and businesses. This letter is also being hand-delivered and a point of discussion during our inspections. Based on suggestions from the Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee, we are developing signage to remind staff to follow best practices, such as breaking down boxes and keeping lids closed. Additionally, we are making clean and sanitary trash areas a requirement for Clean Bay certified restaurants. At this time, staff recommends moving forward with the Enhanced Dumpster Enforcement Program and defer amending the municipal code to a later date. If directed by council to lock bins, staff will return with a revised ordinance to enforce the locking bins. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions. We've also invited our trash providers, Mike Smith from Waste Management and Gabe Chavez from Universal Waste Services to answer questions.
Okay, thank you very much, we have some speakers. Start out with Keon, and you have a total of eight minutes. I just gotta see a couple faces that I recognize.
Just to start off, I hope that everybody has what we are requesting in front of them, okay. And I've gotta learn how to do this thing again.
Got your eight minutes.
Oh, do we have the, do we have my slides? And then, oops. Okay, here we go. Good evening, Mayor Wagner and city council members. Poison Free Malibu prefers option number one, originally decided at the Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee meeting on January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. This is a copy before you, requiring dumpsters to be locked twenty-four seven. Our major concern are that the two trash companies that service Malibu, Waste Management and Universal, the lids supplied by these two companies are warped, ill-fitted, rodent-eaten, and unable to be closed tightly. Some dumpsters have lids pinned against the wall and they can't be closed. Some dumpsters have no lids at all. Malibu already has an ordinance that requires tightly fitting lids on their dumpsters. They were notified over a year ago to fix the problem, and they still have done nothing. Tight-fitting lids are key to resolving rodent issues, and the dumpster companies have been ignoring it. I have looked at dumpsters in over ten local cities for the past eight years while creating resolutions against rat poisons. Uncontrolled trash is the number-one problem attracting, feeding, and multiplying the rodent population. The dumpster companies, the dumpster companies are not only in violation of our own present ordinance for a tightly fitting lid, but ordinances in ten other local cities. And of course, there's plenty of bait boxes around the unclosable dumpsters everywhere. Pavilions already has their lids, uh, uh, no problem, no one throws trash on the top, and everyone uses the easy combination lock. Pavilions, even though they have locked dumpsters there, there's huge graps that provide easily access to the rodent population. These are all defective lids that are everywhere. PC Greens have, here's an example of overstuffing, uh, which will be resolved by a lid-lock ordinance. They, this is during the day, this is, overstuffing is, is everywhere. I've been witnessing this for years. Point Dune Professional Center, this is a center where there's no serve, uh, no food-serving business. The waste, there's food waste in the dumpsters and also all over the ground. Lids are pinned against the wall, cannot be closed. This is one of the most disgusting places that I have seen. And, uh, this is not a food-serving business. Urban Outfit is another, uh, uh, non-serving food business. And here's a little squirrel jumping out of their dumpster during the day. Employers bring their food that goes into the trash. Recently, I just went to another establishment, and that was the Dunn and Bradstreet Business Center, where the dumpsters are overstuffed with food and from the waste of their employees. Recently, a baby poisoned bunny was found near their property. They have the worst second-generation anticoagulant poisons in the bait boxes, boxes surrounding their property. Dumpsters must be closed for non-food service businesses also. Ravina Restaurant, they have a locked dumpster, for years they've been using this. It solves all of, they had unauthorized access, people were dumping all over. This has solved everything for years. I spoke with their management years ago. Whole Foods Market, opening day, everybody went in the front door, I went in the back door, and I saw what is going on there really, okay? Here you are, a brand-new, uh, store on the market, and they've got the overstuffed dumpsters again. Malibu Village, the, the, these are these ill-fitting lids that are everywhere. They're separated, the rodents bite through, and it's easily, easy access everywhere. Malibu Village, again, uh, this is a warped lid, you can't even close it, there's warped lids everywhere. Malibu Colony Plaza, this is, this is unauthorized access. This is another problem that happens both day and night. The homeless person there is shoveling trash all over the ground, and he's not cleaning it up. Twenty-four seven lid lock is the answer, day and night. Malibu Colony Plaza, uh, this hap, it is always overstuffed with garbage and trash everywhere. Malibu Colony Plaza, uh, they do, they, they did listen to me years ago. They did put in the rollbar locks, but nobody's using them, okay? So all the dumpsters are always open all day long and every day. This is, uh, another one, Malibu Colony Plaza, the rollbar lock is in place, but I could stick my whole hand in there, there's huge gaps in between, even though they do have the rollbar lock. Again, defective, uh, uh, lids. Malibu Country Mart, that, that is a huge hole there, gaping hole at the right, yeah. That's what we're dealing with, these are the companies that are serving our, our city here. Another, that's a close-up of the gaping hole there at the Malibu Country Mart. There's, uh, there's a gap in the lid there where I can fit my whole hand into, yeah? You think a rat can get into that? That, that, they get into there all the time, I get, I get complaints that there's rats and mice all over our dumpster areas. And this is in our, this is where our, our community is. How about Malibu City Hall? Wasn't there a rodent issue over here? Checking your dumpster area, there's filthy gooey trash all over the, all over the ground. Is, is, is City Hall considered a business? This is food from staff and visitors that are everywhere. Again, there is a large gap, this is, the companies have ill-fitting lids, they must, this must be repaired. Malibu Country Mart, education, education is essential. I have spent, I've, I've informed every business in Malibu from one end to the other. I've spoken to every property manager, they took my advice, and they have, they, we have signage in every single, uh, shopping mall. So, uh, however, property managers change, employees change, and promises to keep the dumpsters closed, closed vanish very quickly. The solution to feeding and The solution to feeding and multiplying the rodent population, overstuffing, open lids, and unauthorized access is twenty-four-seven lid-locking with a tight closable lid with simple combination locks. Also have a continuous random inspection to be sure that the municipal code is being complied with and with and impose meaningful fines that will ensure immediate compliance. First fine, five hundred dollars. Second fine, one thousand. The present staff report allows for dumpster lids to be opened during the day and only applies to food-serving establishments. We have seen many examples of dumpsters with rodent food sources at non-food service establishments also. The staff proposal with a multiple warning system is complicated and the penalties are minor, mild, and over a long-time period. Staff propose to check the dumpster lids twice a year. There are open dumpsters now all over Malibu. We request that this non-working proposed policy be abandoned. Please support option number one that was decided on January twenty-second at the Environmental Sustainability Meeting for twenty-four-seven closable lock ordinance. Thank you. We, I also have now a quick film, quick film, film. How do I hook the?
One year ago, we put the locks on here, but we don't have any control. So somebody need to tattoo the, to the stores for the old employees, we can lock it, okay? Because it's too hard to say yes for one person and no, and that's it.
Thank you, Francisco. Also notice that the lock, that the lids here have huge gaps in them that I can put my hand into. These lids need to be replaced.
Oh, yes, so that.
And how do I get to the next film?
Oh, well, we're, we've got, I know how passionate we all are about this. Can somebody else throw her an extra minute? Okay, so you've got Ryan's time.
It's only a half a minute worth of filmed. Can we go back to the films?
Thank you, Ryan.
How do I get back to the films? Okay. That's a squirrel coming out of Urban Outfitters dumpster wide open during the day. The employees there, this is not a food-serving business. Employees throw their trash in there, the food trash in there. Next film, please. Next film.
Employees have been educated, and that's all that has to happen. You gotta speak to them, let them know. You just can't put trash outside. That's it.
This is Pavilions with no problem. Next film, please. He's talking about, he has lid-lock there. It works perfectly. No problems. No keys, combination lock only. Next film, please. Okay.
We'll reward you the extra thirty-two seconds as I saw it.
These are quick films. He's holding the lock.
This is the solution, but everybody, we need to follow the rules. Okay?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Keon.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a final speaker, Gabriel Chavez.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to reiterate, just like Mike from Waste Management, our position is one of appreciation and willingness to work in whichever direction the city decides. I don't, however, believe that locking the lids is the solution and making it mandatory for the businesses to pay those extra fees for the specialized equipment. I would like nothing more than to see this rodent issue resolved. I have personal experience with the rodents and encountering them in the early mornings out here working. I've had them jump on me and crawl on me, and that feeling of those little feet on my body, it really never goes away. They can carry as many as eight million viruses on one foot. So there's nothing more I'd like than to see this issue be resolved. I just don't think that making the businesses and the city pay more for specialized equipment is the solution. There are programs, however, in regards to recycling, that do help mitigate some of these problems. Separating food from the waste stream and collecting it separately is one way of helping. There are steps in that direction. I think the Enhanced Dumpster Program is another big step in that direction with forcing businesses to comply with having a sanitary dumpster area and issuing fines when necessary. That's pretty much all I have to say. I'll answer questions. I did have one question for you, though. It came to mind earlier with regards to the Malibu Garbage disposal district. And if, because there's a large portion of commercial businesses in that county contract, is there any steps that have been made towards contacting or consulting with the county in moving forward with this proposed policy? Thank you.
Okay, we're back up here at council. Any comments?
Could I ask a question to start? Of Craig or Riva, whoever knows. What is the city's history of levying and collecting fines for non-compliance with trash? I mean, do we regularly levy fines? Are they paid? Or do, what's the enforcement like?
The issue of citations is a fairly recent issue that the city has adopted within the last couple of years. We haven't used that as a tool previously. There's been a lot of staff changes and reasons for not doing that, but we've worked closely with code enforcement to make sure we have buy-in from them, the city attorney's office, that we can impose these fines. They are kind of cumulative and within a matter of, you could, you could have a violation each of three days. You get up to five hundred dollars a day. So some people may not think that's substantial. I think that's fairly substantial to a business. So if over the period of a week or two, they were paying five hundred dollars a day, I think that would certainly get their attention. You know, it would be the same thing. We'd have to do some kind of citation thing and include if we're gonna have locking dumpsters. Is that something council considers? Because that would be the same thing. You're not gonna get compliance unless you have penalties to enforce that and an enforcement program for that. So I think that's something, whatever direction council decides to go tonight, that we have to look into as we bring an ordinance back that would do that. What is the penalties? How do we enforce them? And council would have to consider that and approve those at that time.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Yeah, so I'm looking at this citation. It's not a page number, but it's the very last page in the report or in this item. It says first citation, one hundred dollars. Second, two hundred. And third and beyond, five hundred a day. This looks to me like just a basic case of behavior modification, BF Skinner. I don't think a hundred dollars is enough to motivate change in behavior personally. So I agree with Keon on that. I think I'd like to see the council consider increasing the fines, but that doesn't deal with the primary issue of what kind of dumpster ordinance. And I guess I hadn't thought about it going into tonight. People going into the dumpsters. I don't know if they're looking for recycling or what, or putting things in, taking them out. My feeling on this is that the locked dumpster makes sense, but I'm not sure what kind of cost that brings to the city dealing with that.
Forty dollars a month more.
Well, okay. So those are the two things.
We gotta hold our comments. We'll call you back up.
For me, the fines seem like they're not enough. And I, I wanna make sure that if we cite people that we're following up and collecting, just like if you get a parking ticket or something, you know, you get that second, third notice. Of course, I've never gotten one. So that's, yeah, this, those pictures were worth a thousand words, for sure. Yeah, and if this, this looks like, I hate to say easy, because nothing's easy, but a relatively easy logistical fix. So that's my inclination.
Anybody else? Skylar?
I got a question.
Rick?
Oh, sorry, Skylar. Go ahead.
You have the floor.
So this, this citation thing that Karen just mentioned, about the hundred, two hundred, and five hundred, that's the proposed road ahead. That's not what we have now, correct?
No, that is what we have now under the citation program. We'd have to amend the citation program to increase the, I think Trevor would speak to that, but we'd have to amend the citation program because it applies not just to dumpsters, but all kinds of violations that fit into those categories.
Those are the standard fines for administrative fine violations and different provisions of the municipal code. So if you wanted to increase that, that would require a code amendment. Here, the policy is proposed as increased enforcement of the current laws on the books. If you want to bring something back, just need to give direction to staff specifically about what you want it to look like.
Okay. Another question for Craig. So door number one and door number two, what's the difference from your perspective in terms of cost to the city in the era of belt tightening?
Well, I think one of the key things that we develop and we work with Keon and Poison Free Malibu originally, and they've kind of shifted their position, and I understand. I think there's, it's an educational opportunity because I agree with what Councilmember Farrar was saying. You know, we have to change the mindset, whether it's about poisons, whether it's about trash. And the education program that we put together, I think, is very strong. You have to get people to comply and know what they're doing and outreach to all these, because especially in restaurant businesses, staff turnover from the lowest worker to the managers is pretty consistent. There's a lot of turnover. So you have to consistently educate them. There's still an education program if we decide to, that we are going to have mandatory locking of all dumpsters twenty-four-seven. You still have to educate people of how to do that, what that means, what the fines are, what the consequences are. We kind of disagree on, will that solve a problem? It certainly will change the problem, but I don't know if that's going to solve the problem. What I might recommend to council is that council direct us to continue the enhanced enforcement policy. While we develop a proposed ordinance change to bring forward, and at the time we bring that forward, we could say, here's what the program has done, if anything. We could say that, yes, it's worked, or no, it hasn't worked, and we would agree. We need to do that locking dumpster. But an opportunity for the education and the other program to work while we're developing the ordinance and all the other things that go with that.
Skylar, you're up.
I would like to make a motion to require locking dumpster lids on all the dumpsters because I think that the problem is very clear and no matter how much outreach we do, doesn't seem to get fixed. And I think that the locking ones seem to have more success than the other ones. And I think that we should also come back with a separate item that changes the structure and goes from five hundred to a thousand, or five hundred a day on the fine structure thing with a separate deal.
I think you can put that together, so you direct staff to return with a.
Return with a locking dumpster ordinance for all dumpsters in the city. Doesn't matter if it's at a house or it's at a business. If you have a dumpster, it's locked.
And at the same time also include, increase.
Include the increase in the fines. I will do outreach with that. I'd like to see it happen by the, I'm gonna call it the first of next year. I would ask Mike and Gabriel if that's a realistic timeframe for you guys to get with the stuff that's in the field and get those to be locking dumpsters. I wanna be realistic with what is enforceable and what could happen in the field. So if maybe Mike or Gabriel, if you guys, one of you guys could come up to the mic and just shed a little bit of light if that's possible or not, on what a timeline would be.
Yeah, good evening, mayor. Members of City Council, Mike Smith, Director of Operations for Waste Management. So anything's possible, you know? And no, well, pun intended, we're at your disposal. You know, we work for these customers. We've been involved in this. You know, we have approximately two hundred and fifty commercial customers, slightly over, and a lot of them have multiple bins. As you saw by the pictures, you know, it's, it was a little painful to hear that we've done nothing. I mean, I know we've worked together and been at many meetings, and we've done a significant amount.
I think that you've done a lot. I think there's a lot of improvement from where we were five years ago.
Sure. Locking containers, many of those were locking. You know, it's more than forty dollars. You have to install, you have to put them in. Everything's possible. We can get it done. But of course, we have to negotiate that with our customers or what the level of service would be. Oftentimes, what we're trying to drive here is the correct level of service, all right? And then, you know, our drivers are instructed, if they get there and the lids are closed, you leave them closed. If they get there and the lids are open, we close them and leave them closed. The ones that are across the street, we saw in the videos here that were propped open, that's being done by the facilities. So to specifically answer your question, it's possible that we can get that done, but we have to discuss that with each and every customer because that will be a change in service and a change in cost, all right? But is it possible? Answer is yes.
So, but if we pass a law that says we need, we're requiring locking dumpsters, how long does it take for you guys to go to those two hundred and forty commercial customers and implement, install the locking lids, replace lids that are bent or whatever? I know that you guys do that all the time. Sometimes I think we wish it would happen more frequently, but I also understand that it happens when it happens. If we said, we're gonna get this law in place and by the end of this year, like make it effective middle of January twenty-twenty, is that something that you guys could realistically have implemented in the city?
As much as I'd like to say we can do it, I would think it would probably need more like twelve months than six. You know, it's just something that's more realistic. By the time you switch it, you talk about it, you educate the customers, and I just think it would be more. I think we'd be pressing it to try to get it done in something less.
Okay, so it would be fair to say then, if we split the difference, could we say nine months, or are you saying a year?
Okay, well, we could say ten months, and I think we can get it done.
Okay, so if.
Well, only because a lot happened.
No, no, I know. I'm asking, it's a real question because you gotta, there's a lot of work to ask me down to dumpsters to get picked up, taken to the thing, welded, back.
Well, and they get damaged in the meantime, okay? So, you know, the lids that we use, those are standard for the industry, all right? And that's what the industry uses. And it's evolved from metal lids that are difficult to lift and that are loud when you dump them to the plastic lid. Some fit better than others. But what we've noticed is with the locking, the device that folks like, because it holds the lids down, that doesn't mean you can't break the lids off, okay? So when you see them damaged, it's because oftentimes people are prying the lids off, they jump on them, they fold them in. Many of the, only ones we buy today are all double-wall lids, but they're not damage-proof if you want to break them off. So when you come out there and the lid is broken off because somebody wanted to get in that, and most of the time, they're not really stealing recyclables because there's no value today for recyclables. But they are looking for food, like the gentleman across the street. That's right directly across the street from here. He's recognized by the maintenance folks over there, and it's an everyday occurrence with him and others. So they do break the lids off.
Maybe what we could do is talk to our friends at the Hughes Research Laboratory. They could deliver you a nanoparticle-based lid that would be lighter to lift and more rodent-proof.
It's all cost, you know? Well, I mean, we'll do our best, you know? We, just since we've had these discussions, we've improved. Most every container that was in those pictures of ours have been replaced and had locking devices on them. So we're well on our way with that, as is Universal, as from discussing with Gabe.
All right.
So we'll do our best, you know? We work for you. We're happy to do it.
What I would like to propose is a locking lid ordinance, the increase in fines structure as discussed, and an implementation date of June first, twenty-twenty.
And in the meantime, do the enhanced program?
And during that time, we will do outreach or the enhanced program, yes. And as another request, one day, can we please make the recycled cans all blue?
You're on residential now, right?
I am on residential.
Yeah, all of the commercial bins are being switched to blue as we speak. We spoke about that. But we are working in that, replacing all of those with the blue state colors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can second that.
If I could clarify one point of that motion, Councilmember Peak, the staff recommendation for option one was for locking lids outside business hours. Were you interested?
Were you interested in that or in locking them 24/7?
Locking lids 24/7. And I think that's also easier for enforcement-wise. I wanna be very clear with that if, you know, hey, you can't just say you were like running back and forth for five minutes and unlocked it and then did it again. Doesn't work like that, you keep it locked. I don't think you're dumping trash during all hours of the business. It probably only happens for 20 to 30 minutes of the entire eight to 12-hour business cycle. Good, Council.
Councilmember Mullen, you concur. You seconded it.
Yep.
Okay, we're still in discussion because I'd like to have a few minutes on it. Maybe Mikey would like to have a few minutes on it. Do you wanna go first? Do you want me to?
Sure. Just quickly, I, I, I'm on board. I think this is a big cultural shift. So I'm gonna go from the retailer stance. So I know, I know this is, it is gonna be a difficult shift. I dealt with this for 30 years with dumpsters and training people and, and the whole crew and all that. So it's gonna be a culture shift. It's gonna, not gonna happen overnight, and it really starts with the owners of the business and the managers because they have to enforce it. I think on small businesses, to get hit with fines like this would be devastating. So I really hope we do a lot of education. Even for my business, I did several million dollars a year. I tell you what, when, when fines came our way like this, it hurts. So yes, it's more than education. We had an issue with people breaking our lids too. So there's more sides to this sometimes than appear. But I think the reality is, we're in the era of where we need locking lids, and it's a, it's, it is a shift, and it costs money, and I don't wanna burden particularly small businesses with that, markets and stuff. I think that has to be a part of cost, part of cost of doing business for sure. So I think the education component to me is critical here, especially in terms of food, businesses that do food and just businesses that deal with turnovers, as was mentioned earlier. It's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna take a good amount of education, which we need to do. But it won't be overnight. I, I can guarantee that. It won't, it won't be perfect from day one, but that's okay. That's what it's gonna take.
Thank you, Mikey. My consideration is to the small businesses, of which I'm one, the added burden and the cost that was indicated by the trash receiver and the partners, Waste Management and whatever firms are out there. I don't know how much we've collected in the way of penalties or fines, and I don't think we probably have that knowledge, but it hasn't been much. So how about this? If we ask for the locking lids in option one, but leave the penalties at the current rate, because we're now asking the businesses to incur the costs that Waste Management is gonna pass on to them. So we could still do the educational process and say, by the way, if the educational process doesn't work, you can look to the fines to be increased. But to increase the fines up more than they are right now, even though we haven't been collecting them and asking code enforcement to get out there and do this, we've gotta have a little bit of time for these businesses to absorb these new costs. So my position is I'm for the locking lids. And then what's in locking in option one, as has already been mentioned, but my proposal would be to leave the fines the way they are, at least for the first year of operations to see if they work or they're necessary. These smaller businesses, not Rouse and not PC Greens and Whole Foods, they can easily absorb those costs, they'll pass it on to the, to the consumers. But the smaller businesses or the businesses that don't have food, they're the ones that are gonna be impacted most by the new locking lids. And my proposal would be leave the fines the way they are, but definitely go with option one.
I could support that. I'll amend my second to support that.
If it's a friendly amendment, I would be willing to accept it.
What I would like to do is accept that for six months, we have the reduced, we have the reduced fee structure, existing fee structure in place for six months after the dumpsters or locking lids are required, and six months after that, we shift to 500 and 1,000. So you, one year from now, we're requiring locking lids at the beginning of June of 2020, and six months later, or let's call it the end of that year, and the next year, seven months, effective January 1st, 2021, the fine structure would increase.
Nah, I think I'm gonna go assume Jay's thing, sticking with.
You're withdrawing your second?
Yeah. I, I wanna keep it with what Jefferson said for the first year.
So you, so for 20. So we implement this in June of next year, and then in June of the year after that, you want the fee, fine structure to increase?
Jefferson, I'd like to hear your comment on that.
Well, I think the fines are significant. I think they are reminders. The fines, they go into the general fund if they are cured, is that correct, into the general fund, which is where we spend our money with code enforcement and getting Doug and his folks out there to make sure that this happens. It certainly is a significant amount of money to ask somebody to, to do that, but if Skylar thinks a year later to try it out, I know I won't be here, but we should have to leave it to.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we do, revisit it at the end of the first year? I mean, we're, we're cranking down what they're, what they have to do, and we're cranking on the, the fine, so why don't we just see how it goes?
So maybe you revisit it six months after it's instituted, and then you make the decision if you wanna increase it or not. But I think the.
Well, we won't be here, so.
That's okay, we can make decisions for the future.
You gotta set up, you gotta set a little precedent here, you know? That way they follow up on it. My point of what I'm saying, Jefferson, is that I don't think that the city should always be in the business of going out and collecting fines and that kind of stuff. But when we do, it takes a lot of staff resource time in order to get to the place where you're gonna be actually issuing a fine to someone. A lot more than $100 worth of staff time and everything else. And I think that you also have to have a fine in place that makes the small or large business owner say, that's insane that why are we not following the procedure? And the procedure is very simple. It's, you know, this is all connected to essentially poison. And I think that it's very easy to make the nexus between the rodent problem, the trash problem, the sanitary problem, and everything else. We wanna keep the guys safer that are working out on the road, picking up the trash cans. We wanna keep the property safer, and we wanna use less poison. This is a way to do it.
I gather that.
Maybe make a motion, see if you got a second.
I have a second.
Rick withdrew his second.
Yeah, I wanted to keep it.
Well, you guys make the motion. I can, I'll make the motion. My motion is to implement this in June of next year, have locking lids, and within six months of that, revisit the fine structure.
I would second it if it said a year, like you said earlier, because I think we're gonna have to educate these people first. The staff turnover.
Revisit the time, the, the structure in a year. Revisit the fee, the fine structure in a year. That's, I don't.
Okay. So can I?
I'll go with that.
Okay, so to clarify, the, the motion is to have, to implement the enhanced dumpster enforcement program immediately and to have staff come back with a proposed ordinance which would require locking at all times and.
By June 1st of.
By June 1st of 2020. And the fine structure would remain the same, but with direction that a year from the implementation of the ordinance, that there'd be a report to the council about the fine structure and whether it's effective or should be adjusted. Is that correct?
I would second that.
Could we make that report, fine tune it to, a report on how the program's going in general, including the fine structure?
Yes.
I, I would second that.
I'll third that.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, all in favor of what Trevor just said?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn in memory of Robert Therian.
Motion so approved. Robert Therian. Thank you all for your participation. It's only 11 o'clock.